I think a question about that.
In California, this is not California. And the county does not have people at all.
I come before I start. I'm going to call the Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting for November 21st, 2022 to order. Please join me in invocation from Reverend Griff Odier, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Sovereign Lord God, the complexities of modern life often tempt us to act in favor of convenience rather than in the manner of farsightedness. May those who take action today recognize the potential of their actions in the world of tomorrow. May we look to you to grant our county's leadership the insight and understanding that is needed in this hour. Ben Franklin once observed that you graciously guided our founding fathers in the creation of our national republic. At the Constitutional Convention of 1787, Franklin observed this truth, quote, "God governs in the affairs of men, and if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, is it probable that an empire can rise without his aid?" This morning, we confess before you that once again, we stand in need of your wisdom and counsel. Like Mr. Franklin, we too admit that except that the Lord build the house, they labor in vain that build it. Help our county's leadership to seek your face as they direct the progress of the Mojave County today. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7. A motion and action to call for executive session to be held December 5th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with asterisk.
So moved.
Second. You've heard that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. A discussion of pending or contemplated legal claims or demands. Attorney Esplin.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Committee or legislative report. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the 12th, I attended and gave testimony at the ADWR public hearing regarding the INA designation for the Walupi Valley aquifer. Then on the 17th, I attended the medium caucus for the County Supervisors Association down in Phoenix. I also was chair for my last CSA Board of Directors meeting, and I did hand the gavel over to Navajo County Supervisor, Mr. Jason Whiting, to carry on for the next year as our president. Then on that afternoon, I attended the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission meeting, which was also the 40th anniversary or birthday of ACJC. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Angus.
First, I want to thank Supervisor Bishop for doing such an outstanding job as President of CSA and representing Mojave County so well. Thank you. I attended a groundbreaking for a new, they call it microhospital in Bullhead City. Apparently, that is the wave of the future, these smaller hospitals that do like higher-end urgent care with some beds so that the emergency rooms aren't always full like they are. They're a group, it's called Exceptional Healthcare, and they're a group out of Texas. We're all very excited. They also plan to build housing around it for their employees and some other facilities, and we're just so pleased that they chose Bullhead City. So, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Langfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. I also attended the Arizona Department of Water Resources INA hearing last week, provided comments. The ADWR reported by their data 44,000 acre feet of groundwater being pumped out every year and 10,000 acre feet inflow being recharged into the Walupi Valley Basin every year. So, I counted about 50 speakers or so, a little over 50 speakers, 30-something were in favor of establishing an INA, 20-something were against. And now the Department of Water Resources has 30 days from the date of that hearing to make their finding and determination. So, we're waiting on that. Also traveled to DC this past week in support of the Walupi Tribe in my district, who has been trying for a water settlement for, I think it's been 12 years now. They had legislation that was introduced. Last week, it went to the Senate Committee on Indian Affairs, was passed out of that committee along with another piece of legislation that Mojave County is watching, the Colorado River Indian Tribe's water legislation, and then I think they had one from the Apache Tribe in Arizona as well. There's still a window to get that legislation passed this year, but it's going to be tight. If it doesn't, then we have commitments from Congressman Gosar and the others from the Arizona delegation that will continue to work with us and the rest of the state parties, ADWR, CAP, SRP, Freeport-Mackinac, Mojave County, to get that legislation hopefully passed. That's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. County managers report.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. No report today.
Thank you, sir. Approval of the minutes of the October 17th, 2022 Board of Supervisor meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Call to the public. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.01H, a public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of the open call to the public, individual members of the public may respond to criticism, public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly agendized for notice and legal action. Scotty McClure? Kenny Works is on deck.
Two feet by 18 inches. I'm here to, I never thought I'd ask the Board of Supervisors to make a law. I go back to Kennedy and Nixon debates. And I'm here to gripe about this roving sign that was eight by 16 feet, 132, 128 square feet, which is against the law apparently in Bullhead City. You're allowed four by four on your personal property, four by eights, 32 square feet on commercial. But if we start this next election, we had more signs than I've ever seen in Bullhead this, and next time we're going to have one is in the presidential. This is ridiculous to have these signs up on wheels. Apparently, I just found out that this may be legal as long as it's on wheels. I was talking to Mike. I've been to Allen's this morning, Allen Temper, and Mike files, so I'm slowly doing this. I want to outlaw these things on wheels in this county. You guys have zero laws on the books as far as voting and signs. Zero. I want you to make one. Never thought I'd do that, ask you guys to make a law. I've been to the school board meeting last Monday, warned them that I wanted to do that, and I'm going to go to the Bullhead City, Bullhead City Council meeting next Tuesday or whenever it is. And so, I'm going to try get these lawyers together and figure out if it's illegal or not, or if, so, I don't want, I go to another, I go to the VA over there in Laughlin and on up towards Las Vegas, in, past Las Vegas, and they're all over the place. It's so ridiculous. These 128 square foot signs on wheels, they're all over the place. It's disgusting. I don't mind, I don't care what you put on your yard as long as it's not over four by four. You block my driveway and it ain't going to last there long. Also, they had three people, a majority of five candidates, these three people ran on one sign, and they were the three people on this sign by Fairway Construction, which bids on jobs that's on this school board. That would have been a majority. So, I let the school board know I didn't like that, and when they come up for a bid, simple as that. Yeah, okay, it looks like I pretty much, I'm asking you to look into this as far as what legality is, even when you're meetings, you know, behind closed doors or whatever, see if there's something you can do. Got two years to do this, so. Right to the minute, a second, I guess.
Thank you, sir. Kenny Works. Tanya Dowson's on deck.
Kenny Works, Yacka, Arizona. I want to commend the county staff and the county supervisors who took part in the INA meetings and arranging them. I think, I'm very proud of the way that our supervisors and their staff defended and helped to preserve the known hydrology science that's responsible for determining how much water there is and how much we're using. There's so much critical thinking going on that the actual science seems to get lost in the mix. So, I want to thank you all very much. I know in our, the hydrology issues in our Property Owners Association lost, they threw, threw out the window about 30 years of previous experience and hydrology work that had been going on to improve the situation there in our Property Owners Association, and I've seen how firsthand, how critical thinking can come along and mess things up. So, I want to thank you very much for standing by known science and the hydrology issues. So, so much of it is counterintuitive, like water sitting on Red Lake and not charging the aquifer because the clay won't let it seep into the ground. It seems people would naturally think that it's actually charging the aquifer, but it isn't. But there's so much of that that's counterintuitive that critical thinking comes along and starts tangling things up and messing it up, and I want to thank you all very much for your sticking to the known science in that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tanya Dowson. Chris Reddard is on deck.
Good morning, Tanya Dowson, Mojave County taxpayer. I haven't been able to attend the last few meetings, but I've been following along the best I could, and I wanted to let you know that I really appreciate you so boldly saying no to HUD Housing Voucher Program, the Patriot Act, and Agenda 2030. These items advance centralized government, and I appreciate you saying no to those. Every grant seems to be for some bleeding heart cause in hopes that will be approved based on blind emotion without regard for the people it actually harms. Most importantly, thank you for seeing through the cheap window dressing to the dangers, the dangerous strings that come with these grants. I moved here from California a few years ago after those who advocated centralized government got into positions of power. Sadly, it appears that Arizona's going the way of California. I'm happy to see you voting in a way that helps, helps keep Arizona and Mojave County free. Our country's founders understood that the surest way to long-term peace was for everyone to respect each other's rights to life, liberty, and property, and that working against these rights leads to conflict. Natural law protecting life, liberty, and property has proven to be the best protection for human rights. Thank you for your good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Chris Reddard.
Chris Reddard, Mojave County taxpayer. Good morning. I'd like to read a portion of America's Declaration of Independence, July 4th, 1776. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among man, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to effect their safety and happiness." Fast forward to the 2022 Declaration of Dependence. "We hold these quasi-truths to be self-evident, that all men, women, LGBTQIA2S, Black, Latinx, Indigenous people, and people of color are created equitably; that they are endowed by their government with certain rights subject to change; that among these are open borders, month-long elections, mail-in ballots for all, free and forced inoculations, student loan debt forgiveness, and free accessible late-term abortions for all birthing persons; that to secure these rights governments are to be worshiped by all white men, women, LGBTQIA2S, Black, Latinx, Indigenous, and people of color, deriving its unjust power from the devil himself; that whenever any human becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the government to alter by any means it deems fit, including but not limited to the release of deadly virus pandemics, food shortages, out-of-control inflation, mass slaughter, or transhumanist creation; to install a new enlightened socially equitable species, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such as to them seem most likely to affect governments' absolute rule, safety, sovereignty, and eternal happiness." This may sound absurd and even humorous. The stark reality is, it's here. That's why items on every board agenda need careful analysis to end it, particularly in light of the selection and upcoming installation of a leftist placeholder as our next governor. Bravo to Supervisor Angus for her efforts to declare Mojave County a constitutional sanctuary county. We'll need this since AZ 36787 remains on the books due to ongoing legislative apathy. We are long past the time for pondering, reaching across the aisle, and getting along. We must act now to save Mojave County. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to move item 40 to the front. Ken Cunningham.
You need to close the call to the public.
Have to close it? I never closed it before. Closing call to the public. At request.
Little technical challenge, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Aaron Collins. I'm a area president with Gallagher. We are the consultant to the Mojave County Employee Benefit Trust, and once a year, we come before the board and do kind of a year in review how the trust is and do the current status. So, my presentation is fairly brief. I'm going to hit it at a high level, but, and, but kind of get you through the meat as well. And I'll be happy to answer questions either as I go or at the end. If I can get the technology to work, even better. Just a quick background, so the Mojave County has a, an employee benefit trust that was established under the provisions of Arizona Revised Statutes 11981 back in July of 1990. So, it's a very mature trust now, about 32 years in operation. It's governed in accordance with that statute by seven trustees, one from each supervisory district, and then two that are essentially at large, all of which are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. I won't read the entire list, but it basically provides all of the benefits outside of the retirement-type benefits for county employees and they're covered in eligible dependents. The rate setting, the costs of it are done in consultation with an outside actuary, as they have been from the beginning. It's currently a company called Chiron. And then the financial management is actually done very collaboratively between the board of trustees, the county staff, and the board of supervisors. And it's audited very critically, it's audited annually by an independent auditor, and currently the firm is Walker and Armstrong LLP. Okay, so the basic question today is, how is the trust doing? And I did this a little bit differently this year because of the pandemic and the COVID situation. So, we basically, if you look, we look back, these are three-month look-back periods. So, that March period actually is, is actually from January of 2020, and it comes all the way forward. And I know everybody hates graphs and whatnot, and I get it, but there are some pretty important ones in here. That gray line on the bottom is, is the budget where we're at to operate on an annual basis purely for medical and prescription drug claims. This includes the admin and the overhead. The yellowed kind of dashed line is the trend line, and then the, the black line is actually how the claims actually ran during that period of time. Frankly, overall, pretty decent. When you see those spikes, what you're actually seeing is just large cases coming through. That could be anything from literally somebody getting bucked off a horse, car wreck, COVID cases, cancer, just, they tend to come through in very large clumps of claims. Pretty, actually, the line overall is pretty good. The one I always point to with this is watch the dashed line, because that's really what the trend line is. I'll get into that a little bit later when we talk about medical cost inflation. Large cases, a large case is anything over $75,000 in the, in the frame. They tend to climb, so you're looking at three years in here, they tend to climb because the deductibles, just like on your car, your own medical, they reset every year. And this is a very traditional line. There's literally nothing in here that's kind of odd. The most recent year, you'll see, we did have some extra-large cases, I'll get into in a slide or two, which were directly related to COVID, but frankly, not the train wreck we might have expected from that. So, this, there's really nothing in this, except if you, if you do notice, that goes to that whole inflationary thing I mentioned earlier, the, the last line, the June 20, the June 21, and the June 22 line, it tends to be higher just because it's reflecting that inflationary trend. I know Supervisor Ling and Felter spent quite a bit of time in healthcare, so he'll, in particular, when it comes to actually that on the ground, he'll know that. And I supervise her Angus, but a longstanding member of the board, so she's seen this. Okay, COVID claims. How did COVID directly impact the trust? I have to tell you, anytime you look at a COVID claim number, objectively speaking, the numbers are always funky. The testing in particular, there were no early tests early on, right? Then, basically, we had a ton of testing being done, and it, but it varied where it was occurring, and frankly, whether it was being recorded. So, these are only the claims that were actually paid for in the trust. And you see, we're in the 900, 1,000 range, tested about 20% of those, 15, 20% of those tended to be positive. This will not capture the ones in your health department, and in particular, when the feds started mailing or, or basically telling people go in and get them, those results that people got in their home were not reported. So, the total number of tests is grossly under, likely grossly underreported, and likewise, positives are grossly underreported because frankly, a lot of people were asymptomatic. Okay, so we just, they're never captured if they didn't seek medical care. Okay? On the cases, these are unique. So, these are actually good numbers just on their own. So, we did capture 143 direct, yep, that's COVID, in the plan, 186 the following year, and then 27 currently year-to-date. The numbers, the dollar numbers, again, I would say, big grain of salt. These systems, these claims-paying systems were not built to really segregate COVID. It's a once-in-a-millennium kind of situation, or a hundred-year century kind of situation. And the way it was reported was if you went in to a hospital and had a COVID diagnosis, even if you're in there for an appendicitis, they reported it all as COVID. That's just the way the feds wanted it, right? So, it's got all kinds of weird stuff to it. We do know within the plan on large cases, how many we had that were purely COVID-driven. And when I say that, these were COVID cases that got really bad, there may have been something else in there like diabetes and whatnot, but COVID was why they were on a ventilator. So, we can say that in a relatively small number of cases. How is the trust performing again? Frankly, very well. The, the one area I would highlight, because this has been a problem area for the county, probably going back 15 years, and it's, and it has resolved to a, frankly, to a remarkable degree, and it's the whole thing about promoting well-being. And when you really think about what you do with these plans, you're really not doing health insurance, you're doing sickness and illness insurance, or, you know, accident insurance. But the county made a, made a very real commitment about five or six years ago to kind of fixing what they were doing to promoting health. And, and there's a, there's a committee of people that are strictly volunteers, no pay, you know, their supervisors release them, and frankly, they're the unsung heroes. These are folks from the sheriff's office, from, you know, the treasurer's office, from the superior courts, that just kind of help get the word out and promote things, right? Data-driven and targeted, we use the data from the county's workforce, its average age, its mix of men and women, where are they physically located in the buildings? Like, the road department's obviously going to be largely male, treasurer's office- Treasurer's office is gonna be more female, that type of thing. And they bring on-site services that are intended to do early detection and prevention. So mammographies, prostate scans, cancer screening, skin cancer, flu, pneumonia shots, right? Simple, basic stuff. And candidly, that is the goal. If there's an unspoken mantra, it is boring is beautiful. Keep it boring, keep it easy, stay off the agenda. You know, it's a problem area, it's gotta be solved. So you bring all that on. But then most recently, in the last several years, we've actually moved into the technology solutions. So when you get into things like flu shots or mammography screening, you're doing mass screening or mass testing. You don't know what you're gonna catch. It doesn't take a lot to actually get a good return on investment. When you look at these technology-based solutions, Levango for hypertension, diabetes prevention, diabetes management, behavioral health, and Hinge Health for musculoskeletal, you get a much smaller percentage, but you get a 100% of that population is afflicted by a specific medical condition that drives cost and decreases quality of life and productivity for employees. Diabetes is the one that we always talk about because it's a train wreck. It does not occur alone. It typically occurs with some combination of high blood pressure and high lipids, which means they're at risk for not only diabetes-related things like kidney failure, blindness, loss of limbs, but also cardiac events, okay? So these programs, the beauty of them is, they only charge if a person signs up and participates. So it's not like a mass screening where you have minimums you have to do or you don't find anything. This is managing a 100% population of people with a specific condition that drives costs. Cash position, this is about the only part where the good news kind of vaguely goes away a bit. We actually lost about $1 million in the trust in that most recent year. But I will tell you, that was largely by design. The trust has a target of about $8 million in cash on hand. And that represents the element that the statute requires. We have, it's a dollar estimate of our incurred but not reported, plus a surplus reserve target that helps the trust weather storms. And that combined number is right in the ballpark of 8 million. I think the specific target number is $7,940,000. It varies by year. That's the current target number. But we're in excess of that. And over about the last five years, we've worked with the Board of Trustees and the Board of Supervisors to responsibly draw that number down so that the trust is not building up a surplus, frankly, of what are public monies that could be used to provide services locally. So we did, we worked with finance department over the last couple of years and modified the funding formula of how much goes into the trust to draw it down, to get that closer to that number, basically just to be responsible with taxpayer and employee dollars. So that's kind of on target. I will tell you this, we'll also monitor that. We've done this before with other clients where the number got too big, and they just say, "Look, that's not responsible." And then you catch like three or four years of bad claims in a row. So it's a little bit knock on wood. It's a guess, because you never know how many cancers or cardiac events or car wrecks you're gonna get. But this was pretty much literally dead-on. We had hoped to draw it down by $1 million, and we did exactly that. So pretty rare would be that. I'd like to tell you that was skill, but there's a lot of luck in there, okay? Okay, and I'm always asked, crystal ball, what do you think, what's the future hold? You know, I have a pet theory about government in Washington DC, and it's that they've been trying to fix two things for the last 50 years. Fix, in air quotes, education and healthcare, right? And I think we're gonna continue to see more and more federal expansion, more and more federal involvement. It's just massive, it's continuing. Having said that, and I'm probably one of the, like many of you, I know I'm a big critic of our federal government, having said that, they actually did two things that were good this year. They passed a law on transparency in pricing that requires that all plans publish by code how much is being paid by facility on any dollar that goes through a plan. And they have to be machine-readable files. And what that's let happen is insurance companies, federal government, state governments literally have set up computer programs to go in and mine those and to expose the differences in the pricing. We believe it will create, over time, we believe it will create huge downward pressure for abusive pricing in hospital-based healthcare. We'll see, but it appears to be good. And the other one is the Surprise Billing Act, which has created a mechanism to resolve bills for out-of-network providers that are frankly ridiculous. We see it very often on air evac, on helicopter-based air evacuation. In my time in Mojave County, having lived here for 30 years, I saw helicopter air evacuations go from $2,500 to put the bird down, maybe $18,000, $15,000 to go to Phoenix, to $70,000, $80,000, $100,000 for the exact same transport, all out-of-network. So it created a process for that, so there's some good ones. And basically on this, having both slapped and complimented our federal government, but there's that inherent conflict where somebody says, "Hey, I think everybody will benefit from this," and they forget the pricing, right? So government's like, "This is a great idea, let's go do that." But there are real world costs to all of that, and that's the tension that we manage. So one is, I think we're gonna continue to see the feds and the state involved. Two, healthcare inflation always outpaces Consumer Price Index by a multiple of three to five. I think that's gonna keep going. Pharmacy costs in particular are trending at about an annual rate of 18% to 20%. We think that's gonna get much worse. There are particular drugs, or not drugs, I'm losing the term. I don't wanna get lost in it, but pharmacological agents now for things like cancer. We've seen them come in on things like hepatitis C where it's $90,000 for a course of treatment. We are now seeing treatments in the $3 to $4 million range for drugs, okay? So I think we'll see that coming up. Then, on well-being, and this is a real bright spot, this whole concept of wellness. It used to be we just did mammography screenings, which were great, cardiac screens, that type of thing. But it's much more holistic now, and they're getting, I think the industry is moving to understanding that you do also have to have that psychological component involved in there. A classic example is cardiac patients, people with open-heart surgery. Traditionally, or not traditionally, very often, will suffer severe episodic depression in the initial six-month recovery period. So building into the preparation for that surgery, psychological support for the person doing the procedure plus. And that's just one example, but they're doing it much more holistically. And then finally, and I say this as someone whose favorite words to hate include, there's an app for that, okay? But we are seeing, in particular, those programs like diabetes and hypertension, whatnot, we're seeing very effective harnessing of telephone and cell technology to monitor, to record, and to help prescribers or treating physicians manage chronic disease states. So I know a lot of that's Greek, but it's also pretty exciting to actually see some advances in all of that. Mr. Chairman, board members, be happy to answer any questions. I see nobody's head hit the table by nodding out, so I appreciate that. And then any questions you have, Mr. Chairman.
Questions for Mr. Collins. Supervisor Angus.
If none is questions, I have a comment. I want to thank Erin Collins again. This is my 10th year as head of this trust, and it's been the biggest honor. I've seen so many changes for the better with all this wellness stuff. We have a great board of volunteers who really take their time. They take time out of their day, they come here, read all the material, ask great questions, and make decisions that are frankly, sometimes very difficult. And I think we've done a pretty good job. So thank you. And again, thank you for the whole wellness thing. That was another thing that we kinda went kicking and screaming into, and I think we've seen very good results from it. And I always want to take this time to tell the employees that if you have a big issue with your meds or whatever, and you're not getting the kind of answers either from Human Resources, if you've gone through the chain and you still haven't got it, please come to me. As chairman of the trust, I will help you to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good presentation. We have a presentation on the 2022 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement.
Good morning. We'll put this up here for you guys. It's a little lighter now. Let's see if it's working. That is not what I wanted to do. It's a very slow mouse, okay. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'll keep this pretty brief. I know we have a full agenda, and I didn't want to do the same presentation that we've done now for 17 years where I just get up and say, "Look, we're awesome, we got the AEP." So I wanted to give you a little bit of information. So this is the Achievement of Excellence of Procurement Award. It's supported by the National Procurement Institute. It recognizes organizational excellence in public procurement and nonprofit procurement. Really, the way that it helps us make sure that we are continuing to achieve at a high level. It's continuously evolving criteria in what matters to procurement agencies today. It provides an opportunity for benchmarking against other agencies. There are performance measures and best practices that it holds us to. So there's benefit in us applying each year because it keeps us as a top-performing agency. And then I wanted to kinda go through, how does Mojave County compare within the United States and Canada for the people that apply, and the state of Arizona? I don't want to read the slide to you, but I also realize that it's kind of small font. But in Arizona, 24 Arizona agencies have received the award at least once since the award's inception in 1996. There are 10 Arizona agencies that received it this year, four cities, three counties, two higher education institutions, and one special district. A little shout-out to Pima Community College. They received it for the first time this year. Mojave County's 17th award. Only eight Arizona agencies have received it 17 or more times. Five Arizona agencies have only applied and received the award once, and for whatever reason, either chose not to apply again or were not successful in their application again. This is Mojave County's fourth consecutive award. The city of Tucson has 27 consecutive awards. I'll brag on the city of Tucson, I've worked for the city, and they are one of, I think, three agencies across the country that have received the award every year. Tempe, Chandler, Mesa, Pima County have received it 18 consecutive years. The Central Arizona Project has received it 15 consecutive years. ASU, 14 consecutive, and again, Pima Community College and Maricopa County have received it one consecutive year. I believe Maricopa County has 18 total, but they had a lapse, and this was the first time in a couple of years that they've received the award. Across the United States, this year, over 200 applications were received. 548 agencies have received the award since its inception. This year, 171 agencies received it. Eight agencies have four consecutive awards. 11 agencies have 17 total awards. 49 agencies, this is all of the 171, have more than 17 total awards. And really, I'll kinda keep it at that. My team is normally here with me for the presentation. Unfortunately, we have some people out sick. We would not accomplish this without the hard work of everyone in our team. It's a lengthy process to put the application together, but really, it's a measure of what we've done throughout the year, and we wouldn't do it without the staff that we have. So usually, I'd ask for a photo op. I'm gonna ask for a rain check, and we'll do it at a future date. And if there's any questions, hopefully, we'll be able to answer them for you.
Good job, once again. Will we be putting the, that's not a plaque, it's a...
I don't even know what you call it now.
Trophy, we'll call it a trophy. Will that be put on display in the lobby so that the public can see it?
Yes, actually, our 2021 is currently on display. So once we get our photo op with you, we'll put this in the photo, in the photo display? In the display in the lobby, and we'll take our 2021 back. We have all 16 awards either display out here in the lobby, or if you want to come to our tiny little office, we've got them displaying a trophy case. And we might need to get a bigger trophy case.
Further questions?
Chairman Ghul.
Supervisor Linganfelter.
I just want to take the opportunity to brag on Tara and her staff. I just want to say how happy I am that you're our procurement director. And a little story for people that may not know. Many years ago, I was the procurement director for Mojave County, and I hired Tara with that one day of public procurement experience. And to see her now at this podium, and she's professionally certified. She is very active nationally in the National Institute of Governmental Purchasers. Mojave County is well-known because of your involvement in national policy on public purchasing. I know you're working with your staff on professional certification themselves. And the fact that we have 17 awards now is amazing. Top 1% of all counties nationally, I would say, still. So just kudos to you, keep up the great work, and thank you for all that you and your staff do.
Thank you, Supervisor. I would say, again, I can't do it without my team. They're all watching either from the office or from home. And I appreciate the work, I enjoy the work. And I've told you this multiple times, I appreciate you giving me that opportunity. I think it was 13 years ago now, so thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. The following items listed under consent agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Bishop, anything to remove?
35.
35. Supervisor Angus?
11.
11. Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Linganfelter?
Item 21.
31?
21.
21. 21. And I'm gonna remove item 6 and item 31 for no action.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve consent. Minus 6, 11, 21. Was it 33 and 35, or 31 and 35?
31, 35.
31, 35.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. You guys appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Let's see, item 6, I had a member of the public that wanted to speak to that, John Caponetto.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. John Caponetto, Fort Mojave, Arizona. I was informed this last Friday that item 6 on the consent agenda was gonna be polled, and that I may want to be here this morning to explain an incident that happened at the Mojave County landfill a few weeks ago. What had happened is...
Excuse me a second, Mr. Chairman. This is to set the public date, right, hearing? Hearing me? This is to set the hearing date, correct?
Yeah. We'll let him speak, though, since he came up to talk.
Well, I understand that there's gonna be a hearing on the 5th. Okay, but I was advised that I may want to come down here and address the situation that happened with the Mojave County landfill prior to this as a precursor to that meeting that's gonna be happening on the 5th. And basically, this is really a small item. In comparison to all the things that your supervisors have to do with the county, this is really a small item. However, it's not correct as to what's happening down there at the landfill. I was down there back on the 9th of September, and I was informed that there's a surcharge on mattresses now for $14.75. Small item, but my main concern with that was the fact that if they're gonna charge $14.75 for surcharge for mattresses, people aren't gonna pay it, and they're gonna be dumping these mattresses out in the desert. There's enough trash being dumped out in the desert already because people just don't want to pay the landfill fees, which aren't that much to begin with. I mean, they're reasonable, they always have been. But a $14.75 surcharge on a single mattress, when you consider that a ton of debris brought to that landfill is $35, and for one mattress is gonna be almost half that amount? That's absolutely ridiculous. So anyway, when I went there, they told me that as of the prior month, in August, 1st, that's $14.75 per mattress. I went ahead and paid the surcharge. I asked the fellow at the weight scale there, "Why are you guys charging the $14.75, and how did you come out to that amount?" He tells me, "Well, the Laughlin dump is charging $30 a mattress, so we figured $14.75 was fair." No other explanation, kind of ridiculous. Okay, so anyway, I took care of my business with them, I left. And then on the 23rd of September, I wrote all the supervisors a letter explaining this situation. I did get a reply from Ron Ghul's office, from Valerie, asking me if I had any proof that they were charging the $14.75 because when she called down there, they said they weren't charging the $14.75, and they actually posted a sign, or they said they posted a sign advising the public of this. And she investigated that and said that there was no sign. She wanted to know if I had any proof that I actually paid $14.75 surcharge. I did have the receipt, I did send it to her, and then she replied back to me... And then she replied back to me on the 17th that they contacted the servet and that they arbitrarily added the $14.75 on their own, of which apparently they're not permitted to do because all the fees are set by the supervisors. So in regards to that, she also informed me that, this was Valerie, that all the fees would be stopped as of the 20th of this last month. And I said, "Okay, well, that's fine." So that's the situation that's going on, okay? And I guess I'll appear back on the 5th for public discussion as to finding out if these fees are going to still resume or not. They shouldn't. But that's my concern. I wanted to express it to you. It's a small issue, but those are the reasons why I wanted to express it to you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Cappanetto? And we found out that those fees had never been approved by the board of supervisors and we're the ones that set those fees. And thank you for bringing that to our attention, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
Chairman Gould, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity to address this issue. We were informed through Supervisor Gould's office that these fees were being charged. We looked into it and initially didn't find that they were being charged. And then after further investigation, we did find that Republic Service, who runs the Mojave Valley landfill, had on their own account decided to begin charging those fees. Republic does a great job for us at Mojave Valley landfill. They are a very large company. They manage a number of landfills. They manage the Lake Havassee landfill as well. So there's some, at times there can be confusion as to whether they own the landfill or the county owns it. And there's not, and I need to take that back. There's not confusion whether they own it or we own it. We definitely own the landfill, but, excuse me, but in some of their management practices, they go from their landfills that sometimes spill over onto our landfills. So once we were made aware of this fee being charged, we notified them that that fee had to stop immediately and that they could not charge any fees that hadn't gone through the board of supervisors, so.
Are we going to be able to get a return of that fee amount for the people that were charged that fee?
We are, yes. We'll be working with them to identify as best we can where those surcharges were and where possible, reach out to those people. And I'll definitely, I've got Mr. Capriati's information. I'll be reaching out to him on that as well.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Walsh on this issue? Do you want to testify to the item number six?
So item number six is just setting the public hearing for the December 5th meeting. This is an annual hearing that we do to update our rates in relation to the CPI each year. This is part of the contract that we have with both of our operators and a practice that we do annually.
Questions for Mr. Walsh? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. You guys appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Item 11, Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I took this item out. There's a few others like this. This item is a, to approve an amendment to a sole source contract and a couple of things that were added. And one of them says, "An adding forced labor of ethnic Uighurs certification." And I kind of scratched my head because the company Mutual Linking is in Wallingford, Connecticut. And so I just wanted some explanation. Is this now something that the federal government is making us add to contracts? And how do you oversee that?
I took a look at that also and it's an act of Congress and it only applies to slave labor in that particular area of China, which is kind of odd. So I don't know that that means that we're okay with slave labor in other areas of the world or why, it just seemed rather odd. But I know what they're trying to get at is the forced labor of Uighur Muslims in China.
Right, but what does that have to do with this particular company?
I think it's an electronics company, so a majority of electronics are made in China and some of them may be coming out of that area where they use forced labor.
Yeah, I do that, we just specifically say that, not all the other egregious things that happen around the world, but this is something apparently we have to put in. Again, the government makes this, but what is the oversight for that? I mean, is it just the honor system or does anybody go to these places and make sure they're not doing it? It's just another thing to make us feel like we're doing virtue signaling, making we're doing something good?
Chairman and Supervisor, I'll do my best to address the question, but I believe this went into effect in September. It is a requirement that in all contracts, either for renewal or new awards, that we include this verbiage. I'll let you guys speculate as to the legislative basis behind it, but essentially from a procurement standpoint, it's a law. We're following the law. I don't think anyone from Mojave County is going to go out and inspect, but part of that clause that we've inserted into the agreements is that we are asking them to certify that essentially they are not using anything that was produced using forced labor. I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce the region, so we're calling it the Forced Labor Clause. We're adding it to all of our contracts and amendments. And then there's another portion in there that says if they become aware that something that they're using did, was produced using forced labor, that they will immediately notify us and we will work to rectify that. So as far as oversight, I don't want to say there's no oversight. These things are very difficult and it's a new statute that we are trying to implement. And we're just doing what we can to follow the law, but essentially if somebody realized that, "Hey, we signed this certification and now we realize we're not following it," we would work with them on a case-by-case basis to say, I don't know, "Stop using those cell phones or stop using that equipment and we'll give you a certain period of time to cure that." I'll kind of leave the rest for Attorney Esplin if he's got anything else to add, but I would say essentially it's a law that went into effect and we're doing our best to comply with the law.
I think it's a dangerous precedent to add all these things to the, you know, how government does business and, you know, when does it stop?
Tara, did this come from the, I know it was an act of Congress, but did it come through the state legislature?
Yes, it's, I should have written it down. I want to say it's ARS 39254.
Because otherwise the federal government, it's not in their enumerated powers to tell us how to write a contract.
No, it's in state legislature.
Okay.
Chairman Gould, it's in 35-394. The Arizona Legislature passed it in the last legislative session. 35-394.
Nine-four.
We just, we mimic the language in that statute for these provisions.
Questions for Ryan? Hearing none.
Chairman Gould?
Thank you Tara. Supervisor Angus?
Just motion to approve. Item 11.
I'll second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. You guys appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Number 21, Supervisor Linganfelter?
Thank you Chairman Gould. I pulled this item. It looks like from the backup that was provided, 19 months after the ARPA funding was announced and projects have already been approved, that they're looking like to try to change the goalposts, to take money away from needed community projects and just put it in the pocket of the county. It reminds me of what we saw happen with the CARES Act prior. I still don't know exactly what happened to all the CARES Act funding. I just don't think that it's appropriate 19 months down the road to change this. As far as District 1 is impacted, I've been working at least for, gosh, about a year with the Kingman area, science, technology, engineering and math, the STEM student club here, the robotics. They've been trying for a very small facility. And if this goes through, then that project will have to go away because that's going to be the last part of District 1's ARPA funding. So I'm against this.
Luke, has finance not been charging fees to the individual project for the cost of administering those projects? I know that I got dinged for some fees on my ARPA give-back project.
Chairman Gould, members of the board, so for your particular ARPA project with the stimulus program, we hired temp employees in the finance department. And so those costs that were associated with that project were charged directly to that project. What this request is for is to acknowledge that there are other costs county-wide when county staff are spending time with, whether, whatever aspect of administering the project is, almost every department county-wide spends some time on these projects. Procurement spends an awful lot of time. The county's attorney's office spends time reviewing funding agreements, drafting those agreements, looking into the legality of whether a particular project qualifies under the ARPA guidelines. Finance has to keep track of the finances, obviously. And there's just a number of different things that go into that. And so it's basically an additional workload that's been created when the county accepted these funds and then all these various projects that are ongoing. We have ongoing compliance and reporting requirements per the guidance in order for the county to accept that money and to spend it throughout the five different supervisory districts. There is an associated work burden that goes along with that.
Questions for Luke? Supervisor Bishop?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you Chairman. I just want to say that I appreciate the county's support on my ARPA projects. Off the top of my head, I don't know how many I have, but I think I have more projects than any other district. We've got the sewer project out in North Kingman, the health, care and wellness fan that the health department has to put together a new staff for. We have all these little water companies that have no idea how to write a grant or how to be in compliance and county staff has been kind of holding their hand through all of this. It's been an extraordinary amount of assistance that Mojave County has provided to these recipients. I don't have a problem with this agenda item and I will support it.
Supervisor Angus?
I just want to know how that number was, how'd you come up with that number? 164 per district?
So Supervisor Angus, similar to how the board voted to split the funds five different ways and allocate the same amount to each supervisor's district, we looked at the potential costs. So we looked back to the beginning of when the funds were awarded. I surveyed different county departments to get an idea of how much time they estimated they had spent on the projects overall. What we came up with, and maybe before I go into that, I will just say that the guidance for ARPA allows for the charging of indirect costs or direct costs. And so we looked at both options. In all fairness and in all honesty, charging indirect costs, like the, you know, the cost to keep the lights on and, you know, all those sort of costs, it requires doing a cost study, but it's also not really in the spirit of, you know, what the county has been trying to do. So we went the route of direct costs, just saying, "Look, what are the costs that we can definitively say directly associated with ARPA?" Whether that is, you know, attending a meeting and so you have that staff time that's involved there, or whether that is, you know, hiring an additional person to deal with something similar to when Supervisor Gould had his stimulus program going on. And so we decided that direct costs would be the most appropriate route to take. And so when I did survey different county departments, what we came up with roughly, and this is forecasting all the way out until the end of Q1 in 2027, because all the funds have to be spent by December 31st, 2026, but we will have one additional report that we need to file by the end of Q1 calendar 27. And so we estimate just over 14,700 hours all the way out to that end date. That is based, it's a rough estimate. I think it will actually be higher. It will depend on the number of additional projects that are approved and the complexity that's involved with overseeing them. A good example of that would be the broadband project. It hasn't incurred that many direct hours, but once the IT department has to go out and start inspecting the work because they're going to be inspecting 10% of that work, you know, the burden on staff is going to go up. And so that's how we came up with that.
Okay, thank you for that. And, you know, in the beginning of this, I had, you know, there was no thought about the staff time, but within this year and doing these projects, and I'm still not even done with allocating, there's been a lot of time. I especially want to thank our attorney because he works very closely with people who are not used to what the rules are that they have to do. And I've been very happy with the way that they've been treated by the county and the care that's been given. So I may not have been for this a while ago, but now that I'm seeing how much time it really takes, I understand it.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would have thought a county our size would have been charging these fees the whole time, would have been built into it when we said, "Okay, we're going to do a project and this project is going to, you know, we want to spend $2 million." We get a cost. Those costs should include everything that takes place. And I understand what Supervisor Linganfelter is saying. This, I had no idea if this wasn't being captured before. And if you're going to go back and capture all of them, that's fine, but just to say a blanket, each supervisor district, when some have less projects of higher value and some have smaller, you know, many more smaller projects, which I assume will take more staff time, I can't support at this time. If the county wasn't doing the job they should have been doing to begin with, it's on them.
So Luke, there's, so you're looking at direct costs, but then you still amitrate, divided by five to come up with the supervisor district's share?
Yes, that is correct Chairman Gould.
So there's no way to track which, the labor that went to the individual projects?
Supervisor Gould, we could, we could ask staff county-wide that are involved with these projects to track their time based on which specific project they're working with, certainly. We looked at that option and figured it would be less work. We don't want to create more work than we have to. So the less burdensome route was just to say, track in general which hours, you know, how many hours you're spending in ARPA in general. And that's the route that we chose to take.
So I know on my project, we hired some additional temporary staff to do that. Have we had to do that on other projects?
Not to my knowledge Chairman Gould.
Have we, are we, do we have people that are working overtime because of the projects?
Not to my knowledge Chairman Gould.
So the labor burden is already covered then by the general fund?
It would be, but there is an opportunity cost. Anytime you have that staff member spending time on an ARPA project, there's their normal workload or work assignments that is not being performed. And so sometimes that work gets shifted to other staff members. Sometimes it's salaried personnel that are involved and so there is no associated overtime burden, but they do pick up, they are spending more time working.
Overall or on those projects?
Overall. Overall.
Okay.
The costs for your particular project were charged directly to your project.
Right, and that's how I wanted it to be. I made sure that that happened. Supervisor Linganfelter?
Thank you Chairman Gould. Similar to Supervisor Johnson, I was under the assumption that these costs were already programmed in. And the fact that I, I mean, this is $825,000, almost a million dollars, 19 months after we've been assigning projects and working with stakeholders. So if this passes, this pushes, this puts me in a precarious situation because I've been working with STEM kids and their club here, the robotics kids, for a small new facility. And if this passes, that goes away. So what do you want me to tell them if this passes? That, sorry, what we assumed for the last 19 months was wrong and they're coming back 19 months later and taking this money away from you and putting it into the general fund?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Linganfelter, I did look at the unallocated funds for your district in particular and I'm assuming you're referring to the item that's later on this same agenda today?
No.
No, this is...
I have not presented that item yet.
Okay. Then I will refrain from commenting.
Mr. Chairman?
County manager?
I would say from the beginning, we proceeded with this understanding, knowing that it would impact the staff. We do meet, as you heard regularly, every other week, multiple departments to ensure that these... that these projects are on track from the day they appear on the board and are approved through a funding agreement to inspections that follow and so on. These costs were not included in the projects from the beginning because recall how these projects come about. It's the board receiving, a board member receiving a request from an entity or a person, and that dollar amount is what is on the agenda and that's what gets approved. So there has not been any understanding or, or anticipation. And this is not to debate or argue or undermine what the supervisors are saying, but just to clarify that we have not included the admin cost. And what the, what this dollar amount, 164 per district or 800 in total, is 2% of the overall amount. And 2% direct cost only, not including any indirect, is a simple, easy way to administer and track it. And it's, it's very appropriate for administering these projects. Projects usually allow higher amounts for, to be administered and we're, we will be involved with them. We will have field inspections. We're spending a lot of hours working with folks that have been awarded projects that really have not done federal work. We've done presentations, we've prepared them, we've spent and continue to. And gladly, the board directed us to administer it this way, meaning to deliver these funds. And we take a lot of pride in, in getting them in the community in the quickest way possible. But we truly work really hard to ensure that the recipients are following federal guidelines because the last thing we want is for the county to be audited and to be stuck with the bill at the end of the day. So we, these, these admin costs have not been added to each project. And this is an opportunity, if the board wishes to not do it, we understand. But it's, it's legitimate, it's eligible, and we wanted to put it in front of you for consideration.
Chairman Gould? Supervisor Linganfelter?
I don't believe that all of the, every one of these projects is subject to a funding agreement. And I don't believe that this is included in any one of those funding agreements. So this passes, are you saying that you're going to bring every single one of those priorly approved agreements back to the board and amend that into every one of those agreements? This 2% that you're trying to do? Because those are all in accordance with a funding agreement and it's not contained in any one of them.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Linganfelter, that, that was not the plan. The, the funding agreement is between the county and the subrecipient, whatever that entity may be, whether it's a not-for-profit or a community organization. This is to, to simply capture the direct costs associated with the, the staff burden.
But you're saying it's 2% per project? So how can that not be included in the final project schedule? That 2%? I mean, even if you do a project with ADOT and there's a project schedule, it tells you 2% administrative costs or whatever the administrative cost is going to be. You're just saying it's going to be a hidden cost that's not reflected on each one of those?
Supervisor Linganfelter, the, the 2% target was, we came up with that 2% to cover all of the administrative costs that we expect to, to see across all of the ARPA projects. Some projects will be more labor intensive than others. As I said before, a lot of that future cost estimate will be based on the number of projects that, that end up being proposed and the complexity of those projects.
Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. You know, originally, when this ARPA money was first discussed, I was in support of doing this as a countywide project, prioritizing the need throughout the county. But that fell and we decided to split it five ways, which we did. And we've had all five districts come up with really good projects. And, and I think the administration of these projects should have been known by us. Just common sense tells us this county staff is going to, going to be tasked with making all these things happen. So if, if we don't pay for the administration of all these funds with ARPA dollars, then we're going to take the money out of the general fund. So the, the taxpayers are going to be on the hook for us being generous with ARPA funds. And that's not right. I think, I think this is, it may be a little late being brought to the table, but I think it's worthy and I think it's a good use of ARPA funds to, to pay for the administration of giving this money away so that we can recover from whatever damage COVID did to the people that are subrecipients. So I, I will support this again.
Supervisor Angus?
Sam, didn't we get another allocation of ARPA money? There was another bunch of money that came in, in another bucket?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus, we did indeed. The $42 million that Mojave County received through ARPA fund came in two, they call them tranches, 21, 20, $20 million each, but there was no more ARPA funds than the original dollar amount that was provided to the county, but it came into two installments.
I, I thought we discussed another, another allocation of ARPA money that was coming in that we didn't do, we didn't, you know, disseminate it through the supervisor districts?
Supervisor, I wonder if you're thinking of the extent of the emergency rental assistance?
No, it's not.
I guess the Pilt counties?
What is it?
The, the property and the taxes counties were going to get some additional funds?
Yeah, the Pilt counties were going to get extra money.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor, Supervisor Angus, those dollars were the local assistance and tribal assistance program, and we brought those to the board. They come in two installments in '22 and '23. And those went for the compensation package that the board approved to maintain, to lower the vacancies and maintain our staffing.
Okay, so I, I understand. I mean, we get all this and it, I think it has been much more time consuming than any of us thought it was going to be. I know it has from, from my, and I have a lot of small, so I have no problem with this. But I want to ask Supervisor Linganfelter, so you said that you had promised a project to a group of children and that this 165 would hinder your ability to do that?
I haven't promised anybody anything. I mean, until you have a formal board approval, you don't have a project.
Exactly.
But I have been working under the assumption, I think as all of us have, that these administrative costs were being captured and that in District One, we still had a little under $200,000 left. The robotics, the STEM kids, they go all over the place. A lot of them do come back to work with manufacturers and others that we have in our community. I've always tried to align myself with those things that are going to build up our economy. I've been doing it for over a decade. And I know that they were really excited about the possibility of, of being able to partner to get that building. If it doesn't happen because of this, then I, I mean, I don't have any control over that. I'm, I'm going to bat for them with this item. But if I get overruled, then that's, that's fine.
Chairman Gould? Wait, I got my side yet. So if, if this goes through, I still have money in, in my pot. Your money in my pot, I know. And I, I will be, I will be happy to cover your districts because we all are one district. We're not five different counties, not five different countries. I love that program. So I'll be happy to make up any money from my, my allocation to yours.
That's very, very generous, very generous. Thank you.
So Luke, does the fifth district get credit for it already paying its overhead? Or do I get double dinged on this?
Mr. Chairman, board members, just in fairness, when we, when we sat down with you to work on the project that District Five got approved through the board, we knew we had additional layers of verification and approvals that were not as part of the other projects. And as you very kindly recognized, we, we understood, we agreed that we were going to take steps, including hiring temporary individuals to assist in the process, and that was, that would be part of the cost. So only that portion that directly relates to hiring people to administer the program is included in the admin cost for District Five. None of the staff time that we're referring to here, finance or anyone else that is spending time on the other projects would be captured in that, in that one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
I still have a problem with this. When we have contracts that come before us and they go out for bid and somebody does a bid and they come back and say, you know what, I made a mistake, I didn't add this in. We go, no, you're going to stay with the contract that you bid and we hold them to it. When we went out for our projects here with the board, it is incumbent upon staff to step forward and say, you know what, what you're doing Supervisor Gould, Supervisor Johnson, is going to be labor intensive for us, so we need to have funds. And I think we'd all would have said, yeah, we assumed that's, that's already included in there. But it wasn't. Coming back to us now, it embarrasses me because we are supposed to be depending upon our staff to make these recommendations to us before we make decisions. And I guess that's what really bothers me. And then to come back and insulting to me to say, we're going to split this 2%, five ways with everybody. You're not saying, hey Supervisor Gould, he had, he gave out 800,000 and it cost us a million dollars in, in extra labor. You're not saying that, you're just saying, well, we're just going to take 2% and we're just going to put it in the general fund. That, that's not, that's not getting fly by me. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
County Manager?
Again, just to reflect on, on memory, not to, not to be, not to debate it or be argumentative with our board members. We did, we did approach the board very early on, shortly after we were informed that we would be receiving these ARPA funds. And the initial rule that came with them as to what is eligible, we approached the board with sort of an approach or a proposal where at least half the funds would go to more general projects and the other would be divided. The board had a different vision and enacted on it. So the, the strategy was we were going to divide these funds five ways and proceed, and that's what we've done. At that time, we truly did not know the intensity, the variety, the, the variety of the projects. As you know, we've had everything from broadband to water and wastewater to the healthcare preventative program to smaller and larger water needs and so on. So it's, it's been really, it's been different and we've learned more and we've been able to, as you can tell, to quantify it. We know it will likely exceed the 2%, but we just wanted to bring it in front of you for consideration. So it's really not, not, you know, backpedaling. It's not intended to offend or embarrass. So we, we just, we, we saw an opportunity here. It's an, it's an eligible expense and it's on the lower end of the range that project would cost to administer.
Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. And I, I don't think I need to remind this board that this is Mojave County. So all of these projects are Mojave County, but several other projects have gone into other districts. I know Supervisor Linganfelter has been championing the broadband in District One, but that also encompasses the underserved areas in District Four quite a bit. So we're kind of sharing that. My health and wellness van goes to District One, Three, and Four. So we're kind of sharing that. There, there's several of these projects that overlap into other districts. It is Mojave County. And as far as the robotics, I think that's, that's not been brought forward to the board from what I've been told from members of the robotics team because there are benchmarks that have to be met before they are eligible for, for that funding, according to what Supervisor Lincolnfelter has shared with them. So they may not ever be able to meet those benchmarks or it may be years yet before they can do that because they don't have the money to do what, what is required leading up to the ARPA funds being. So anyway, would, go ahead, go ahead, I'm, I'm done.
Supervisor Linganfelter? Apologize.
Thank you. Just to comment on what County Manager Elters said, I, I hope that he can appreciate, although we didn't go with administration's proposed plan way back when, 19 months ago, just the incredible countywide impact that the approach that this board took has created. I think it's far wider an impact than we ever would have achieved if we would have won under that original program for our residents. And, and I mean, to be frank, these are tax dollars that are coming back and being reapportioned. And I think that this board has done a really good job with the breadth of projects that we've approved and creating a tremendous impact that we never would have achieved without it. That's all I have to say.
Chairman Gould? I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Second?
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. Do you have it? It's ordered. Where are we? So no, do I need a vote on the no action on item 31? Madam clear, okay. Item 35, Supervisor Bishop?
Okay, so 31, we're skipping over?
That was removed at the crest of the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Okay, on, on item number 35, I just wanted to bring it back into discussion. In speaking with Michael Smith, I've learned that as of this Friday, 17 million and, and change has been expended in Mojave County on this program. He's received 3,600 applications with a little over 1,700 being approved. So I just wanted to give Michael the floor to kind of explain all this to us and, and make sure that we really want to send this money back if there is need in Mojave County. And, you know, when I was down at the state association meeting, I kind of discussed this with several counties and I couldn't find any other counties that is turning this money back. And they, they, they kind of thought it was great that we're turning it back because it's more for them. But, you know, Michael, you, do you have anything that might change this board's mind about sending this money back? Is there need in Mojave County?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus Bishop? Apologize. The numbers as of Friday are correct of what you stated. Little over 17.5 million dollars has been distributed to Mojave County residents. About 1,700, over 1,700 applications have been approved, over 3,600 plus were applied. Those are for landlords as well as for residents when, when they apply. So just giving those numbers. I believe the board has spoke in regards to their beliefs on, on this program. The only additional thing that I could add is that in regards to the funding, the process, to Supervisor Johnson, Chairman Gould, to Supervisor Johnson comments earlier in regards to staff and their ability to, to implement this program. We brought an IGA to you guys in, in the prior board meeting, asking for assistance to actually support this program of ERAP because we do not have the ability with the current staff and the current programs that we have within Mojave County Community Settlement. programs that we have within Mojave County Community Services Department to run this program. We just don't have that ability. DES does have that ability, and they could do that. This program allows after 75% of the funds had been expended, that that could go towards affordable housing or other workforce, I'm sorry, or other housing issues that the board has supported in the past. So to conclude and to answer your question, long-winded, the numbers speak for themselves.
Okay, so you indicate this money could be used for affordable housing. How does that work?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Bishop, this program, like I said, after 75% of the funds that were allocated and addressed, it then could go towards projects. Excuse me. So when you think about it, one of the projects that would be beneficial to this would be the LIHTC, the Low Income House Tax Credit. What I mean by that is, when you look at the tax credit, it's simply a platform, right? It says you need to address this many issues, right? And you need to score this number. Part of one of the scoring issues that would help people is if it wasn't in a qualified census tract, and it was one of those things where the county actually supported it, they then could receive, I believe, and don't hold me to it, I don't have the application in front of me, but they would receive additional points, which at the end of the day, basically what happens is when the state goes through for the housing, they open up the applications, they say, all right, who's that one number, right? And they just start going through the applications, and whatever number those are, that's what's awarded. Otherwise, another program that they identified and said that it could be used for as well would be under the owner-occupied rehab program, right? So the more people that we keep in their homes and addresses health and safety needs and issues, that keeps people from looking for rentals. And once again, it keeps the market variable at, instead of putting undue pressure on the current market for housing or rentals, I mean, it would help keep people in their place so they're not looking for rentals. So it's a supply and demand factor there as well. So I would conclude and answer any other questions.
Mr. Smith, was this COVID money to begin with? COVID-related?
Chairman Gould, that is correct.
So that was it. What can we use this money for?
So what we would do is we would have to sign an IGA with the Department of Economic Security. We would then transfer the money. As they went through, and I've discussed prior, is that they would reconcile those dollars against the 17 million that we've already spent. Once we've got to the 75%, we would then be left with almost $1.1 million to put forward to this program to address the housing needs or other issues within Mojave County. Or you don't have to address that as well, and those funds just keep getting allocated to the emergency rental assistance program.
So you said or other thing? You got any idea off the top of your head what the other things are?
So, Chairman Gould, the other things would be allocated towards affordable housing, and that could come at the discretion of the board of how they want to do it. Some of the things they identified, and they've listed those, would be the different programs that we actually currently provide in community services, right? So the owner-occupied rehab, that's what I touched on, that, or other programs that are related to that type of work. I believe, I believe also, another component, I've been doing research on this, is another component is, with the current funds that we have for the CDBG and the other funds that we have within communities, through those programs, you can also work on blight or other issues within the community. So those funds could go addressing those. And if you had the other funds, you could allocate it and bring that together. So there are some different ways within community services that we could use those allocations and make sure that those are being addressed. But obviously, that would come to the board for a board approval.
Chairman.
County Manager.
Can I go first?
Sure.
We talked about this ad nauseam at our last meeting, and that's why it's back here, because we said we didn't want to accept it. This is the ERAP money. I believe that is ripe with fraud. And I think that if you ever looked at it, it was COVID-related, and you had to prove that you had problems because of COVID. And then at the end, they're like, well, just tell us you had problems with COVID. And I think there is a select part of our community that understands this, and they know how to get it. And, believe me, there'll be another $2 million coming down the pike at some point for this. I don't like this particular program because I do believe it's saying to people, you know, let's rely on the federal government for all your basic needs. So that's what we talked about last time. And, you know, I'm not going to vote, I'm going to vote to return this money. At some point, you just have to say enough.
So, Mr. Smith, if we gave you more time, could you come up with some other options that we could spend the money on?
Chairman Gould, we're running out of time here. So what I mean by that is, through the Treasury and what they've asked for in the reports and the deadlines, we pushed the limit all the way to where we're at. They asked for the money to be reallocated by November 4th or a decision. So, once again, we're standing here in front of you. As soon as we could get on the board, we brought it back.
Thank you, sir. Further questions for Mr. Smith? Oh, County Manager, did I skip you?
Mr. Chairman, that's fine. I was just trying to help answer the question that you had asked, but Michael did answer it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Chairman Gould.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we deny returning these funds to the federal government and allow our community services department to put this money to use in this very low-income county that we are supervisors of.
Second. You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. Motion fails.
Chairman Gould, I make a motion to approve the return of these funds to the federal government in the amount of $2,43,245.52.
I'll second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. It's ordered. I believe that concludes the consent agenda. On to public hearings. Item 37, Sheriff Sheaster.
Good morning, Chairman Gould and members of the board. This item is an ongoing yearly grant. It is the Edward Burns Memorial Justice Grant. It is required to come before you in open public hearing. This is a rather small grant. With this, we are looking to get some optics for firearms, some gloves, and some blood kits. It's kind of a supplement grant, but again, this is something we bring before you without incident every year.
Questions for the sheriff? Madam Clerk, do I need to open this as a public hearing as we do on land issues?
Chairman Gould, yes, you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on item 37. Anyone here to testify on item 37? Anyone here to testify on item 37? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on item 37. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve. Second.
You've heard that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. It's ordered. Item 38, Director Lutowski.
Good morning, Chairman Gould and members of the board. This item concerns 5.93 miles of Jurassic Road. It's a roadway that's unsurfaced in northwest Golden Valley, from Estrella Road west through rather rolling terrain where it terminates in the vicinity of a private ranch. It used to terminate in the vicinity of a communications translator site, which I understand in speaking with representatives of the ranch does not exist anymore. What is the issue? The issue is, in 1968, the Board of Supervisors passed Resolution 444, which established an agreement, an agreement with Mountain State's Telephone and Telegraph Company to provide maintenance of Jurassic Road in exchange for an annual fee of $300. Mountain State's Telephone and Telegraph Company does not exist anymore. It was absorbed into multiple public utility companies since it was in business. And in looking at this particular resolution, Mojave County, through Public Works, has reported over the years, over the decades, maintenance, in our HERF report, our Highway Use Revenue Fund Report to the state, maintenance of Jurassic Road citing Resolution 444 as the nexus. The issue is, is that Resolution 444 never formally accepted Jurassic Road for maintenance. The road is currently not at county standards, particularly west of Egar for what the last five miles or so. And in consultation with the county attorney's office, they also agree in opinion that there is no evidence of the county ever accepting Jurassic Road for maintenance. And furthermore, the $300 per year stipend that I mentioned has not been paid. We scoured our financial records. We haven't seen evidence of it being paid in, you know, some, at least 10-plus years. So staff, in recognizing that this road is not of a county standard and does not have any basis for the board ever accepting it for maintenance, is offering this to the board for consideration to remove 5.93 miles of Jurassic Road from our maintenance system. Future actions, the public can always present a road maintenance petition to the board if the public wishes to bring the road away up to a county standard.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Director Lutowski. Supervisor Bishop.
Yes, I spoke to the ranch owner last week on the telephone, and he informed me that he does have a couple ranch hands that still do use this road. And then there is one residence on the road closer to Estrella, I believe. So there's one family that uses just a small portion of this road, and then the rest is just for the benefit of the ranch and his ranch hands. So, you know, I think this has been an oversight of the county, and now that it's been called to our attention, I don't think we have any choice but to deny further maintenance on this road. And I've instructed the ranch owner how to petition the county to bring it into the maintenance system if he brings the road up to standard. And he does have the equipment to do that. So I don't know that the board would approve five miles for one ranch, but that's the process, and he's aware of it. So with that, I'll make a motion that we remove this 5.93 miles of Jurassic Road from Estrella to the translator site from the maintenance system.
Second. You've heard that motion in second. I have a member of the public that wishes to address this. Dan Lutrell.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dan Lutrell, and I'm the said owner of the ranch at the end of Jurassic. And I've owned it for the last 12 years. And the county has maintained the road up to the ranch for those 12 years. And the previous owner had informed me that it was a county-maintained road, and it was maintained by the county while he owned the ranch also. Now, I understand that there was an additional portion of the road that was from the ranch entrance up to the telecommunications site that's been torn down, that was maintained under this provision of many years ago. The county has not maintained that portion of the road ever since I've owned the ranch for the last 12 years. They've only maintained it up to the entrance to the ranch. So I would request that the board vote no on this. And because there was no notification for us, the road is in ill-repair now, but six, eight months ago, when the county was maintaining it, it was in, I think, met the Treasury Road standards that the county had. So it's kind of pulling the rug out from underneath us without any notification. To correct Supervisor Bishop, I do have a family that lives out at the ranch, and an additional person that lives out at the ranch that manages the livestock and handles the affair of the ranch. And that family has a child that's transported daily weekdays to school in Kingman. So they use the road four times a day to take that child to school and back and school and back. And the road is in really bad shape right now because even though you didn't vote on taking it off the maintenance program that it was never on, the county stopped maintaining this road some time ago, the last year, 12 months. I don't know exactly when it was maintained last, but it's in pretty bad shape. So now, I would be more than willing to help bring it up to standards, but I think it's a little unfair of the county after 12-plus years of maintaining the road and many more before that, to tell me now without, you know, without notice, any notice at all, that now I'm responsible to bring that road up to some standard in which you can then put it on your maintenance list that you've been maintaining for the last 12-plus years anyhow. So it's a little, as you can see, it's rather confusing for me as the owner. And that road is the lifeblood for those folks. We've had the fire department out on that road. We've had an ambulance out on the road. When I was, I had to laugh, somebody before me was speaking about being bucked off a horse, and I was bucked off a horse, and I had to have the ambulance come out and take me to the hospital. So I would just encourage you to vote no. Give me some time to work. Assign somebody to work with me to get the road up, or have the county maintain it, and then we can submit whatever provisions we need to submit in order to provide the ranch with a reasonable access. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions or anything?
Supervisor Bishop.
Chairman Gould, I just wanted to point out that because this road is not maintained by the county, an owner like Mr. Lutrell can do the maintenance himself on the road. And I think he only needs to get a county permit to do that. Is that correct, Steve?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Bishop, the board in 2016 passed Resolution 2016-116, which actually enables property owners to maintain the surface of the road only, not change the characteristics, but maintain the surface of the road only for purposes of ingress and egress to their properties. So that includes any public rights of ways. And I have confirmed through my own research in county archives that we do have a recognized RS2477 right-of-way from BLM. So the right-of-way is intact, and so private property owners can, if this was removed from the system, can actually smoothen the roadway with all the county permit.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. It's ordered. Item 39, Tammy Ursonbaugh.
Chairman Gould, Supervisors, thank you for allowing me to come before you this morning. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Bringing businesses to the county is my job, and it's a very exciting job to do. Interstate warehousing is coming to a property just south of the Meyer Distributing Center, Abbott, the Griffith Industrial Park area. They were looking at going to Nevada and chose our area because of the land values that we have here, because of our proximity to California and Nevada and Phoenix, and the willingness that we have to work with the company. They understand that if they come and we are able to grant them this incentive money of $100,000, it's obviously a small token from what they're going to be investing into the county, that they're willing to give back to their point of what they can do as well. And that will be discussed at a further date with the attorney And that will be discussed at a further date with the attorney before an agreement could be made. So today it would be just to approve the fact that we can move forward and work with the attorney to create that agreement. The numbers that I gave you in the backup came from Applied Economics. It's a third-party program that we have so that we can figure out what that looks like. Last time I came before the board with another project, there were several pages. In fact, this time there's 42 pages, and I had complaints that I had the whole document attached. And so this time I just did a very short synopsis of what that looks like, but I have a copy for each if you would like that, or I can email that to you of the 42 pages.
Questions for Tammy? Supervisor Bishop?
Tammy, can you remind us how many jobs this company is bringing to Mojave County and their expansion plan?
So the first year, well, the first, it says in the document for the state that we submitted to the state over the first five years, 97 jobs. We've got the applicant here today, but they will also be expanding beyond this. So this is phase one. They hope to be open by October or November next year. And then after that, within the next year or two, they will expand an additional 250,000 square feet and move up until they reach at least a million square feet. It's freezer space for food, for grocery stores and other products that they need that need to be frozen.
Okay, well, I for one, I'm very excited about welcoming this company, Tippmann Group, to Mojave County and out at our I-40 Griffith Business District out there. And I think our future is so unknown right now, it's kind of comforting to know that there's possibly going to be a frozen food distributing company so close to Kingman and Bullhead and have us who, in case the trucks ever quit running, maybe we would have a local supplier that could help us out. So, yeah, I'm in support of approving this and look forward to seeing what economic benefits that they can bring to the county.
Supervisor Angus?
I'm excited about this company as well. I wish Supervisor Watson was still here because he would always say, no way anyone's going to build a big old freezer in the desert, but that's what's been happening all around. Now, we allotted, this board allotted your department, I think, $300,000 to give out as incentives. So is that the money that's going to be used for this?
That's correct.
So it's not going to be new money that we're allotting today. This is, you're asking for it to give it from your budget that was put aside for this kind of thing, for incentives?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Linganfelter?
Thank you, Chairman Gould. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the representative from Tippmann Group and Interstate Warehousing for looking at Mojave County, selecting Mojave County. We're glad to welcome you here, and it's always great to see our regional economy expanding. I was one of the main people that really advocated for what you guys are calling the Economic Development Account to be a part of the last county budget. And the way it was supposed to work originally was when vacant land goes to either a commercial or residential assessment, that that first year of that new property tax assessment, a quarter of that would be kicked into this fund to allow Mojave County Economic Development to continue to invest into infrastructure, actual infrastructure, water lines, sewer lines, those types of things in the public right-of-ways to keep you from just having a bunch of dirt where a private company would have to come in and install all of those infrastructures to their property lines. And the thought was if you have this fund to invest into those infrastructures into the right-of-way, that it would help to fully build out that I-40 industrial corridor, which I think is a great spot geographically and for a bunch of different reasons. I didn't really envision it or see it as paying for fees for one company. It was something that was supposed to be included into every single budget here on out. It was not. It was discontinued. It's not in this budget, so what you have is, that's it. So hopefully you make it last as long as you can. The other question I have would be for Attorney Espeland with regard to, is this what's proposed? Does this comply with the recent Goldwater action in Phoenix pertaining to the gift clause? I know that there was, they challenged something with regard to a community college down in Glendale perhaps, or some, one of those central Arizona cities. Does this comply, or will the agreement that they bring back comply with that?
Chairman Linganfelter, excuse me, we don't know yet. We haven't seen the agreement. And so this, what this contemplates is that the parties will go back and work out an agreement and then bring it back to the board for approval. But that's what we're looking for, is to determine if it complies with those provisions. The case you're referring to is the city of Peoria. And in the city of Peoria, the Arizona Supreme Court clarified the requirements under the gift clause. There's two main requirements that we're looking for. One is if it serves a public purpose, and two, if the, if we were receiving, if the value that the county is getting from the agreement, if it's disproportionate in any way. A lot of these type of agreements meet the first one, the public purpose one. The second one is the one that we'll be looking at is much more difficult to meet because you have to show that what the county is getting back is a direct economic benefit and that it is not so disproportionate that it effectively becomes a, what's the word? A subsidy to the company. A good example of direct economic benefit is a previous Supreme Court case where the city, I can't remember which city it was, but it was down in the valley, and they agreed to provide monies toward the building of a public, of a parking garage. And so they provided a substantial amount of money for that parking garage, and in return, they got a few parking spots.
Goldwater Institute versus the city of Phoenix.
Yeah. And so that's a direct economic benefit that they're getting. They're getting, the county was, got parking spots, but they only got a few. It was, the value that they got back from that agreement was so disproportionate that the Arizona Supreme Court said that that violated the gift clause. So those are the two things we'll be looking for, public purpose, and if the county is receiving direct economic benefits, and that those direct economic benefits are not so disproportionate that it becomes a subsidy.
Appreciate the clarification. Completely in support of this project. I just want to make sure that the county is protected in any sort of agreement. Will the county attorney's office be a party to writing that agreement that's brought back?
We'll do whatever is necessary, but I mean, the main thing is, though, we'll be looking for those two key provisions.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Further questions for Tammy? Supervisor Bishop?
Chairman Gould, this is in my district, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommended motion, direct staff to draft and prepare an agreement with Tippmann Group slash Interstate Warehousing for the purpose of providing economic benefits to the county in exchange for the county's payment of water connection and our permitting fees of $100,000, the payment of which shall come from Economic Development Fund as discussed, and then bring back to the board for a future meeting for final approval. Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The guys appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered.
Thank you.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Here we are.
Microphone on also. Item 41, Alan Tepper.
Alan thought he had one more in front of him, but Alan probably didn't, I moved 40.
Guess I must've been five minutes and thirty seconds. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me up for the canvas. Could I say a few words?
Feel free.
Thank you. Now, did you hear me say many, 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 many times that there's never any of a perfect election? Never will be. Just a waste, just the nature of the beast, how many things go on. But this was a very, very, very successful election, you know, for Mojave County. It was very successful. And what I'd like to do is just say a few stats. Basically speaking, this could have not happened as well as it did unless we didn't have the following. There were four full-time election staff members. There were 20 part-time election staff members. There were seven full-time recorder staff members, if I got the numbers right. There were 15 voter registration, early voting staff members involved. There were 339 poll workers. There were 168 political observers at the poll sites on election day. At least that's what was signed up. I don't really know, you know, when they were out there. There were five political observers in my department from election night up and through last Thursday. There were 16 members of the political party that helped us do the hand count, the early ballot audit hand count that happened, and we got it successfully completed in one day to the penny, so to speak, on Veterans Day. There are family members that had to put up with us. That went out there, my wife. And then again, there were 82,758 people that exercised the right to vote. You add all that together, it's 83,332 people needed to make what happened, happen. Okay? So I just want you to take that just in general, and we did a great job, and there's many people out here that are out here just because they were part of that job and are standing behind me right now. Couldn't have ever done it without them. Now I'm here for questions. Thank you.
Questions for Director Tepper? Supervisor Bishop?
Could you repeat the total number of people to make this happen in Mojave County?
574 people that weren't voters. Add it all together, there is 83,332, so 574 people to make it work.
Amazing. Very good job. Thank you for making Mojave County proud.
Thank you.
Supervisor Angus?
Great job, Alan. We've spoken, and I wish that we could send you and your team down to Maricopa and Pima and give them some lessons on how it's done. and give them some lessons on how it's done. Because as everybody knows, and there are people who speak to it, it's a mess down there. And, you know, we've been approached, and what I'm going to say right now is no matter what happens today, this is like 2020 redo, because we went through this same thing in 2020. We were asked not to certify for a time. The legal date that we must certify by is the twenty-eighth. And, you know, I don't intend on doing anything that would put Mojave County in legal jeopardy, because we did everything great, just like what you said, and I don't think it's fair that we have to pay the price. You know, that we have to go through this sort of angst every election because of what goes on down there. So this, whatever happens with this vote right now, I want everyone to know it has nothing to do with Mojave County, because you guys did an awesome job. This is probably the first election I did not get one call. Not one. I usually, my phone's ringing all the time, so excellent job. Thank you.
Cut off your phone that day.
Yeah, I know, I did.
Dark powers cut off your telephone line. Supervisor Langefelter.
Oh, nothing except to echo what everybody else has said. I mean, an election that is run like is run in Mojave County is a reason to actually have confidence in our elections, not the opposite. So I just want to thank you and the five hundred other plus people that made it work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job, Alan. Great job to those, all the staff and to the people that worked at the polls, to the five hundred and seventy-four people. They did a great job. You always do a great job.
Thank you.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Once again, Mojave County leads the way, and with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the canvas of the November eighth, 2022 general election, adopt the Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2022 dash zero two five.
I'll second.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yes, please.
Supervisor Angus.
So we've been approached not to certify the election. I know there are many people who are here to speak to it. And right now, that list includes Gila, Yavapai, and Cochise. And I would like to hear, you know, I think Jeanne Kensch, who is the chairman of the Arizona Mojave County GOP, would like to give us some updates and tell us what's going on and how we are involved, whether we like it or not, into it. So before we vote with that.
Yeah, I'm going to run through, I've got about, I think, eight people that requested to speak.
Okay.
Madam Assessor, come on up. Madam Chairman, County Chairman.
Definitely have my chairman hat on today. Thank you for having me, Chairman Gould and the board. To canvas, to canvas is to validate our votes. Mojave County voters are fortunate to have Alan Temper as our election director. He's probably the best in the business. Alan Temper did an excellent job, and I witnessed it. I was there. I was on the hand count. I was just impressed all the way. Fair, honest. And Mojave, Mojave County is a great example throughout the entire state of how it should be done. This is why I would like to see you certify the election. I'd like to see you to certify the election vote so we don't risk the statutory recount that could help our Republican Attorney General candidate, Abe Hamaday, because you need to have all fifteen counties certify in order to recount. So that's the concern we have. But if Maricopa County doesn't certify, which doesn't look that way, then we're going to be without a recount anyway. So, but I also understand that Mojave County voters have been disenfranchised. Mojave County voters have, their votes have been diluted. Mojave County has become, their votes have been worth less than they were prior to this vote due to the mismanagement and the dysfunction of the Maricopa County Elections Department. Maricopa County's vote suppression is evidenced by voters that could not vote, my sister being one of them, by ballots that were not counted properly, by tabulation machine malfunctions in forty-eight percent of their voting centers, by the stalling of their, of their counts, and by the investigation that has been started by the Arizona Attorney General just this last Friday because of their mismanagement. I wish they had, Alan. I really do. And I'm glad I don't have the decision like you guys do, because to certify this vote could put our recount in jeopardy, but yet to not certify, I mean, to not certify the vote could put our recount in jeopardy, but to certify the vote tells everybody around the state how great we are and how they should do their job. So good luck on that decision. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question.
Supervisor Angus.
So we were told the statutory date for certification for us is the twenty-eighth.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard that, you know, until everyone certifies, we can't do the recount, right?
Correct.
But now there was an Attorney General letter that went to Mojave County, Maricopa County, and they have to supply a lot of things by the twenty-eighth, meaning, have you heard, are they planning on certifying? I don't even know if they're done counting.
They aren't done counting, as far as I know, as of this morning. I have not heard, I know that the Attorney General did say by the twenty-eighth, but even the twenty-eighth isn't the same day that the county board is going to get together to certify. So what's going to happen? I don't know. There's a lot of different questions, and that's why I'm glad I'm not in your seat.
So already there are three counties that are not going to certify at least till the twenty-eighth, because again, I would never go past the twenty-eighth, no matter what anyone said, never going to put Mojave County in any legal jeopardy.
Good.
But whether or not we do this today is more of just a statement, just like in 2020, because we are going to certify before the statute date. And so since the other counties didn't, they just need one county not to certify so that the whole state can't certify. So again,
Correct.
Just like, I mean, this is 2020 redo. If we don't certify today, we're just making basically a statement of solidarity, which is the same word I used two years ago, you know, for the other counties and the Arizona GOP that, you know, we, we understand and we're mad. I'm mad. I think everybody in Mojave County should be mad.
My vote has been disenfranchised, and I agree with you a hundred percent that that vote of solidarity might be very valuable, because everything changes every twenty-four hours. And so not understanding what they're, how they're going to handle it, how the governor's office, how the Attorney General's office is going to handle it, is kind of difficult for you guys to know how you to handle it. But it wouldn't hurt any to delay it for that vote of solidarity. So all the other counties do know that we're, we got their back.
Thanks, Jeanne. And I have a question for Mr. Elters. If we did vote not to certify today, could we theoretically have a special meeting on Friday, which would be the Friday before the Monday that it's due? I know last year there was talk that Alan had to get in the car and drive down there with the certification, but that, that didn't happen. They worked with you. You were able to overnight it. But I wouldn't want to go to Monday, because I think that's cutting everything too close.
I'll take a drive on Friday if that's what you need to do.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus, as long as, you can set a special meeting for Friday as long as every board member is available. By statute, if every board member is not available on that date, there has to be a five-business-day notice. So that kind of depends on availability of the board for what date you set a special meeting. Chairman Gould, Supervisor Johnson, technically, no. There are employees that take a floating holiday that day. However, we do not observe it as a actual holiday in the county, so it is a workday.
So this would be a special meeting by phone, I would assume, because there was just one, one issue, one vote. And again, I hate that this is put upon us. I do. But frankly, I'm torn about it, but I want to, I want to hear what the other supervisors have to say.
Supervisor Angus, I, to answer your question, I defer to Attorney Espilon.
So eleven-two-fourteen states, at least, so the board shall notify the public of the location and the day designated, days designated. Special meetings may be called by a majority of the board or by the chairman. At least five days' notice of the special meeting shall be given to any member not joining in the call. I'd prefer you just do it on Monday, just to be safe.
I'll, I'll take a drive to Phoenix on Monday if you need me. Anything to have a fair election.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. So you're saying to delay in order to allow this strange process down in Maricopa County to play out?
I do agree with that. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you know, the issue of voter integrity is very important to me, no matter how you feel it, you feel about it. I'll withdraw my second to approve today, just to allow for some adaptability in what this board chooses to do.
Further questions for GOP Chairman? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Pickard. Sorry. And Louis Proudfest is on deck.
Hi. I had the privilege to be an observer, a ballot counter, and a machine observer during the election cycle in Mojave County. I was very impressed on how well organized the operation was. Both political parties were always involved in each of the many processes to check that each and every ballot was counted and verified correctly. After the experience, I have no doubt in our election office. I encourage everyone to volunteer in the process to understand how well the election system works. My hat is off to every single volunteer, to Alan, the Mojave County Director, and Steve, the deputy, who were very professional. You have, helped me to have the utmost confidence in our election, and it was a fantastic opportunity. I was honored to be involved with Mojave County Elections Office in the twenty-two election. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Louis Proudfest.
Glenda Irwin on deck. Good morning. My name is Lou Proudfoot. I'm the second vice chair of the Democratic Party for the, for Mojave County, excuse me. I was here in August for the primary, reporting on what we saw during the primary. And as Alan said, this was even better than the primary, more smoothly, the process more smoothly, things went better. We had a lot more observers. We had a lot more people involved. And so I think that we should evaluate the process that we went through and evaluate Alan's report, which is very straightforward and very clear. And the question is, should we certify the results of the election in Mojave County? And I think very strongly that we should. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Glenda, Glenda has had to go, had another appointment, and so she won't be here.
Thank you, sir. Teresa Evans.
Oh, it is still morning. Good morning. I just wanted to say that it was an awesome and fantastic experience to work both the polls and early voting with the most amazing people that I've ever had the privilege to work with. Alan Temper and Christie Blair are two of the most fantastic people to help you through with whatever you need to learn to run a very smooth election. Kudos to them and their staff, of which I'm proud to be part of. We did have some slight hiccups, not because of Alan and Christie or anything else, but because of the fact that, A, one of the complaints that I heard was the sample ballots came out on October twenty-first. Early voting opened up on October twelfth. Not everybody received a sample ballot, from what I understand, and I do not know if this is state or county statute, that only those that are not on the mailing, early mailing list does not receive the sample ballot. The second thing is, we had to talk people out of shooting mail carriers simply because of the fact that when the ballots came out, the husband would receive a ballot, but the wife didn't. Or the son and daughter, or the aunt, uncle, mother, whatever. Half the household might receive it, the other half didn't. This needs to be addressed. The third thing that needs to be addressed is, I understand that you voted against voting centers. But when you stop to look at it, we already run one in each of the cities on early voting. People could come in from all over the area and do their votes. Why can't we do that on vote, on Election Day? A, we have the facilities to do it. We have a fairground. This building is huge enough with a parking lot that's big enough. I don't know what Havoc Seal has to offer, or Bullhead has to offer, or Colorado City, or anyplace else. But I seriously think that needs to be considered. A, it would make it easier for everyone, because not everybody can show up at early voting. The other thing that I marked down is the information booklets that are sent out. I don't know how you guys feel about this, but when I go to vote for a judge or a candidate, I want to know where he went to school. So I think we need to look into those information booklets, but this election was one of the best. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I attempted to put a, when I was in the state legislature, to put together a more informative book on judges, but the judges didn't like it. As you might expect. Thank you, ma'am. Sure. Scotty McClure.
I just want to say thank you to the five hundred and seventy-four people that worked on this. Hurrah. Maybe Maricopa County needs to bring back the chads so they can count them right. Ah, sarcasm, okay. The only thing I observed down there in Bullhead was, you know, I go to the library a lot, as you guys know, is that you had, you could go into the library, you know, and vote early. Now, on Election Day, you had to go to down Train Road and then Raymer to the church that did not have voting on that day at the library. There were quite a few people going to the library to vote. They had their things in their hands. So now they got to get back in the car, and some of these guys were with canes and walkers and stuff, you know. But, and then go find a church that they don't belong to, maybe. But they didn't know where to go. The library was at least giving them directions. But if they showed up at, well, the library closes at five. You know, this confused a lot of people. They weren't informed that the library's closed for voting on that day. I think it ended on Saturday, Friday or Saturday, whatever. But, so there's just one little thing that they didn't know what they were doing. They weren't informed. Maybe they don't do the newspaper or the news. Of course, we get Phoenix News, you know, off air. They're not going to tell the people in Bullhead how to, where to go. But, yeah, and, and I think the main reason that it, that this election ran so good, because there weren't any Democrats running.
Thank you, sir. So we have Supervisor Bishop's motion. I believe Supervisor Lingefelter's withdrawn his second.
I'll second him.
So Supervisor Johnson seconds. Clerk, can you, want to restate the motion?
It's just a motion to approve the canvas.
So you've heard that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. Do have it. It's a order.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
I make a motion that we delay the certification until a special meeting called on Monday, November 28th.
I'll second.
Time at 9:30 a.m.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Can you tell me what is going to change on the canvassing of this election? Or is this just a political statement? We're making, we're not doing what the agenda calls?
It's both. It's a political statement. I'm not going to lie. We did it last year. We did it in 2020. It doesn't, it doesn't hinder us. It's not going to hold us liable. It's, again, a statement in solidarity with other counties who are doing this. And basically, you know, I'm surprised there are this many counties, frankly, who are not certifying. I think last, in 2020, we were the only ones saying, you know, this is unacceptable. What's going on is just unacceptable, and you better get your act together. And I hope we can put more teeth in that. And I hope the legislature takes it up. And I did speak to Clint Hickman, who's on the Maricopa Board of Supervisors over the weekend, and, you know, kind of shamed him enough. And, you know, I was surprised that so little was done between 2020 and now. I think that was shameful. And, you know, again, you're right, Supervisor Johnson. That's exactly what it is. I'm not going to lie.
Supervisor Bishop.
Yeah, I think this is only a political statement, and, you know, maybe rightfully so. But this is the canvas of the Mojave County vote. Mr. Timbert laid it out to us. We had a good election. We've got Democrats and Republicans who spoke about how good the election was. There is no reason for Mojave County not to canvass this vote. And to have a special meeting on Monday, when, I don't know about the other supervisors, but my agenda is pretty full on Monday. So I either get my vote, what's the terminology you're using, saying that we're disenfranchising our vote? This board is disenfranchising my vote unless I cancel my appointment so that I can join everyone in this political statement. And I think that's just kind of ludicrous. We're not Maricopa County, we're Mojave County. Our vote is solid. Our canvas is going to be solid whether or not it's today or Monday. It's going to be the same. We're, we're good.
Currently, this is the only political statement that's available to us to make that we're dissatisfied with the continuing poor run elections in Maricopa County, which disenfranchises our voters. It is purely a political statement, but it's the only way that we can make that statement. Thank you.
Chairman, if I could just add just a couple of things procedurally. If you bring it back on Monday, it'll have to be a reconsideration because you have voted against canvassing the election at this point. So if you bring it back on Monday, one of those persons on that side will have to move to reconsider the item. I also have to stress, from the county attorney's office, we recommend approving the canvas no later than the 28th on Monday.
Thank you, sir. So we'll have to agendize that as a reconsideration.
And Chairman Gould, can I ask Alan, again, is that going to put you in a very bad position? Are you going to have to hop in your car and zoom down there? Or maybe Jeannie will, you guys can go down there, we'll buy you dinner, like Supervisor Gould did last time?
It will not.
Okay.
This is a little different than last time. There's a few more days of play with when we didn't have it then.
Fantastic.
Thank you, sir. So a motion on the floor. Do we have a second on the motion?
I second it.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So order. Item 42. Director Kingsley.
It almost fits on the screen.
All right. Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chairman and Supervisors. As directed during the previous board, we were, staff was directed to bring back answers to questions and allegations, accusations that were brought forth in public comment, as well as through email. And so in response to that, we've prepared a presentation for that, as well as to follow your direction today to discuss the medical examiner and those questions that are being brought forth. Overall, just for the presentation, so as directed, I'll leave this presentation, but there is myself, as well as Tara Acton, Pro-Cumet Director, Rhonda Mayo, Public Fiduciary Director, and Funeral Home Contract Administrator, and John Hassett, Contracted Office of the Medical Examiner, available for questioning by the board. I believe the, the goal of this is to continue to address, this is something that is organic, that has been challenging, that has been faced by the county for more than 15 years, and the different challenges there to resolve this. I don't know if there's always a perfect answer for everything. But I believe my goal here is to provide as clear information as available, so that you can understand the situation, the challenges that exist behind it. Usually, a lot of things are just not one answer, meaning that there's just not one cause to something. So try to get through that. I provided a very lengthy document of a lot, all the questions and answers. And I thoroughly tried to provide that, so that we would be able to, if needed, streamline this. And so we can, once I get to those points, I'm going to just go over kind of a foundation where we're out on some of the information and some of the data that I was able to prepare over the weekend, and have those topics, and then we can go through those questions. But anytime you want to direct any, any questions to any of these members here, you can do that, or we can wait to the end. But I'll ask your direction along the way as well. So, so the Office of Medical Examiners, so over this, for this presentation, have a data review, rotation review, and then informational review that I provided with the questions that were both presented in the public comment, as well as via email. So as a foundation, one challenge that this was presented to the Board of Health in September with, dealing with vital records. And a lot of this is to be able to verify death in our county, how it's, how it's happening, and how it's being controlled. With that, there are, a lot of it is vital records, and a part of it is ARS 36342, disclosure of information. And in my interaction with the Arizona Department of Health Services' vital records, they continually prevent challenges to me, saying I cannot share certain information. So just to touch on that, A is the state registrar, which is not me, and the local registrar, may provide information contained in vital records to persons, including federal, state, local, and other agencies, as required by law, and for statistical or research purposes. Except as authorized by law, a local registrar, a deputy local registrar, or the state registrar, or their employees shall not permit inspection of a vital record or evidentiary document supporting the vital record, disclosure information, disclose information contained in a vital record, or transcribe and issue a copy of all, of all or part of the vital records. So as my interactions have been with the director of the Arizona of vital records, I've gotten a lot of no's, trying to collect data to compare previous years, compare this year. And part of the contract when we, from my understanding, and has, is we put in a transparency clause, to begin to collect and report data that wouldn't identify individuals, but would be able to provide a clearer picture of, of how death is occurring within our communities, as well as being transparent with our contractor, as well as our funeral homes, and all our stakeholders. And that purpose was there, and I believe it's also, at the same time, a lot of the root cause of our problems here, and understanding the data, which is a challenge. So in part of that, so with Mojave Vital Records Death Certificates, there's a system, it's called Dave. I've been trying diligently to go through my 40 hours of required training, and it's been a challenge. So usually, I've just been able to reach out to the director and coordinate with them. They do collect all the data. It has what funeral homes are on it. It has all the information of death and everything that is involved. For example, so in order to charge for their license, the Arizona Funeral Board of Directors and Embalmers, they have access to the Dave, and they, in order to determine their licensing fee for each funeral home, they pull the data, and they determine how many death certificates were issued to them. And based off that, that's how they, that's how they determine their individual license. So it's able to do it, but they do not share that information. So is that information there? Yes, how to click a button? Yes. Is it something I have access to? No. And something that the Arizona Department of Health Services guards fairly, very closely. What they do do is, on a quarterly basis, they provide all the transactions that a funeral home did, and they provide that information to the funeral home. So most of the answers that a lot of times I get from the Arizona Department of Health Services is that we provide that information to the funeral home, it's up to them to coordinate. And so that would require, in our county, the funeral homes coming together and sharing all their information of their, of the number of cases, and putting together, be able to compare. Challenge at that right now, I would say, being able to bring them all into the same room. But something we can definitely work towards, and definitely want to work towards as a county, of having that type of cooperation. And the next--
Mr. Chair, I have a question before we get too far.
Supervisor Johnson.
On death certificates, the county doesn't have a, I mean, they have a pad of death certificates, I guess, that have to be signed off. So shouldn't the board be able to ask you to get them to say, Mojave County issued 14 death certificates last month, three to this person, two to that person, and shouldn't we be keeping, I guess, for records, even though we send to the state year by year, so we can say, you know, last year we had, whatever, 47 deaths in the county. This year, we've got 20. We see a rise or something. When you say it's sent down to Phoenix and they don't give it to us, shouldn't that be something local that we have?
Glad you asked that. I'm a little bit happy. I have a good answer for you. So initially, as I've been trying to learn this whole process and this whole thing, I kept on getting no answers. And even from my department, vital records, trying to figure it out, well, no, that's something that we send. It's all, you know, the state likes to control it. But the state also allows us to track. And so I digged, and I found that. So yes, on a monthly basis, and I just found it three days, four days ago, after many times of asking and trying to understand between myself, with my staff, but to give them credit, they were always referencing the Dave system and that process. We do it for financial purposes. And so I, there was a little bit of disconnect there, so we were able to, to that. So on a monthly basis, yes, we do track that personally within our county, and it's why now I can share that information, I believe. It doesn't have identifiers, and so I can tell you how many death certificates are issued to each funeral home each month. And I've collected the year before this contract and the current year right now of the contract. And--
Thank you.
--present that to you. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. This was my weekend. My wife's a little mad at me and lack of sleep. But, so I have, I took two sets. Obviously, we don't have November and December of this year. And I collected for essentially November 2021, when the contract began, to October 2022. And then I also collected here from November 2020 to, to October 2021, to be able to compare. I went through and all the data, pulled everything out I could. Now, this is initially the numbers that we're showing here. This is the death certificates that were presented each month, the number that, that's on record to each of these funeral homes.
Chairman Gould, we can't see the numbers on our screens, and I can't, I can't see it there. No, it's cut off.
Our monitors are not the same size as the--
Yeah, it's--
--monitor that's up in the podium.
So it cuts off--
Cuts off the ends of them.
Yeah. Would that be fixed, or is that just something--
Um, that would be an IT question.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Yeah, because it's cutting off on both sides the most important information.
Got the center part, though.
Should, do you want me to try to shrink it down and see what happens? Or, I mean--
I need techies in there.
Oops. I'm trying to figure out how to even exit out of the program here.
Okay.
Um, oh, there we go.
Yeah, it's not just yours. It's been, every presentation today was cut off on the ends.
Is that a little bit better? Can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So it didn't get cut off? All right. So, again, and this is kind of our first look at, and it does make sense, right? So I can go back to previous years and compile the data and look at. So we're going to look at a, a year that was before the contract and the year current of the contract. And so this is each month, and how many death certificates were issued specifically to that funeral home. So looking at from 2020 to 2021, we could take, now also understanding that Serenity Memorial Group of these, they own four of them, and then there are four others. So they have a larger number, naturally, because they have, they have a funeral home in each of our majors, of our cities. So looking at those numbers, you know, from the year before, before they were contracted, we can take Desert Lawn. So we can, we can look at that, Desert Lawn. 49, 76, November 49, December 76, then January 78, February 77, March 72, April 57, May 63, June 59, July 63, August 53, September 71, and then October 73. So those are the numbers that how many death certificates Desert Lawn came to the county and got from us. Now, this, we'll go and follow through the next year. So looking at November 2020, and then November 2000, Desert Lawn, they had 49 in, in that November 2020, and then they had 58 in November of 2021. Then in December of 2020, they had 76, and December, they had 59. So they had a decrease. And in January of 2022, they had 95, and in January of 2021, they had 78, a decrease. In February, 94, 71, 65, across the board, they all had a decrease for Desert Lawn. Leeds also had decreases in parts. Bradbury had an increase. And overall, what I did basically for is, let me, I just did math on this. So I broke down totals of how many per year that they each had. So Arizona Affordable, in that 20 to 21, had 143 death certificates issued to them. And in the November 21 to October 26, they had 126. So they had a decrease of 13%. Bradbury, a total, in November 2020 to October 21, 2021, we issued them 202 death certificates. And then they, November 21 to October 22, we issued them 296. So they had a 32% increase. Desert Lawn had 791 death certificates issued to them, and then 730, so a decrease of 8%. Desert View, they had 86, 81, a decrease of 6%. Diamond Suns had 499, then 552, so they had a 10% increase. Leeds had 993, and then they had 874, and they had a 14% decrease. Mojave Memorial had 509, and then they had 248, and that 105% decrease. Then Sutton had 599 and 609, and they had a 2% increase. Overall, just the totals of those four that are owned, that were previously owned by Serenity Memorial Group, that first year before they had the contract, they had 1,529. The year after that, while they've had the contract, they've had 1,185. The year after that, while they've had the contract, they've had 1,185. They've had almost a 30% decrease in their numbers. So when we just look at this initially, and this is just off, how many death certificates did we issue? I haven't been able to explore completely. I have a name. I have a case number. I have the cause of death. I have everything tied to each one. There are unique identifiers. So each of these numbers are, they're tied to a specific record. So they're verifiable on those points. From there, it's, I haven't, again, saying I haven't been able to completely extrapolate other conditions that might have influenced it. But just looking at the numbers, do we see an increase in Serenity Memorial Group's numbers while they have been the contractor? No, we've seen a 30% decrease. And that could be attributed also, there's also things that could attribute this. People are dying less, COVID. There's other stuff that I haven't completely considered. But with the accusations, is Serenity Memorial Group doing anything that profits them? Conflict of interest and things like that? It's not evident. It's not, I don't see any evidence of that here. When you look at the train of the numbers, two, they're relatively consistent. You don't see large spikes. You don't see large drops. You don't see a change month to month. You see a normal set of pattern. Now, I can go back a few more years and see what the patterns were before, kind of before. We'd just have to take some time to do that data, kind of an audit, and pull those out. Now, before this, before the transparency side, what the contractor is now doing now is rotation numbers. And that's, I'm going to bring that up in just a little bit, which is even more complicated than the many things that influence it. But as well as there, I broke that data down to say, are we seeing a month to month, any type of influence of a change overall? Is there a pattern by Serenity Memorial Group that they're doing anything incorrect or anything to that effect? So looking at those numbers that are available on the website as part of their contract that they have posted. So this is the medical examiner data. So it deals with rotation, a cremation permit. Meaning that, so each funeral home, in order to cremate a decedent, has to receive a signed authorization by the forensic pathologist in order to do that. And they, in order to receive that, they do have to pay a fee for it. Once that is paid, then they have the permit in order to do that. So there's one process that has also been involved in collecting the data and presenting it. And then their records, their records do show, as obviously it has all the information for each decedent, the name, case number on those points. Now, a lot of the rotations, understand that there will be cases assigned to the medical examiner and they won't be there. There are certain times, even though they have a case number, they're never even directly involved with it. So there's a lot of variability. There's a lot of different things, the challenges that go into this. There's more than just the medical examiner and the funeral homes. There is our law enforcement. There is dispatch. And there's many different things that influence this on those points. So it was previously pointed out that, just said that, I've noted, we found human error. Yes, we did. But all these other things also contribute to it. It's just not human error. We have had issues with software and that's been proving. And the contractor has demonstrated an ongoing process to always improve that and has always responded to us. We have asked him at time to simplify down the data so it's easier, more digestible. And each time, the contractor did accommodate our ask on those things in order to help this process. But so when looking at the data, so let's just take a rotation data just for Lake Havasu City. And so for rotation, it's there, we have currently right now, the public fiduciary, they determine the areas, the geographical areas that would be most conducive to law enforcement, that we can arrive as best as possible, as quick as possible, 30 minutes to be able to, for funeral homes and those involved, to be able to have a quicker turnaround. And so whatever funeral home that is in there, a licensed funeral home, they're automatically put in. They have to opt out themselves. So looking at Lake Havasu, we have three there. We have Leeds Fraz, Desert Lawn, and Bradbury. And so looking at those months, just taking those numbers and breaking them down on rotation calls. And again, these can be influenced also is understanding that when somebody goes out for a rotation call at funeral home, they can bring a body back and then they will have to transfer it to another funeral home. And that changes where that number is reported for it. So again, it influences. This is not just an apple for apple. There's a lot of times these numbers are highly variable. But just looking at that, so on a rotation, so January is B for Bradbury. So January, they are the one on rotation call who is supposed to receive the call. February, Leeds Fraz, March, Desert Lawn, and then it goes back and it rotates and they get the months. So looking at that, so if we were to look at Desert Lawn, when they were not on the rotation, they received one. They received one. Then when they're on rotation, they receive six. Off, zero, one, when they're on rotation, 11. When they're off rotation, one, three. When they're on rotation, 13, seven. We see a normal pattern. We also see that with Bradbury, same thing. When they're on rotation, they had the higher numbers and they dropped down. Leeds Fraz does demonstrate, but they are very well known also to put them in the benefit. They're very well known in Lake Havasu City. And so there's a lot of families that would, that prefer, because of their marketing and their business, they choose Leeds Fraz. And so even though somebody might have been picked up from Desert Lawn or Bradbury, the family's going to say, well, I want Leeds Fraz. So they get transferred. So that's why it's a challenge here. Now, if someone, if I didn't explain that, someone could easily say, look, oh, it looks like Leeds Fraz is influencing the numbers here and that. If these other parties, Desert Lawn or Bradbury, wanted to take any type of offense to these numbers, they could easily try to build a case on, just on that data. But we have to give Leeds Fraz the benefit and understand how these numbers are being generated and that they have marketing, that they have, they're very well known in the community. You know, so that you see those higher numbers, even to the point where Desert Lawn, in March, they had six rotation calls. But Leeds Fraz, you know, is showing they even had number and they weren't on the rotation call. So we have to understand that variability. And then also, when we go to talk about it, we also have to understand that if I were to just take this number, say I was a funeral home and take this number and then, and not include the other cities, you know, so I could inflate Desert Lawn's or Serenity Medical Group's numbers and say, oh, overall, yeah, this month, they received 32 rotation calls, but I only received, and if you only use this area, yeah, your number's going to look low compared to that. But if you include all your numbers, you know, and then it changes the narrative. So we have to be able to look at all of those. And then again, also, Desert Lawn owns four. And these other ones, Leeds Fraz owns one in Lake Havasu and one in Kingman. Bradbury is just in Lake Havasu City. And Sutton is here in Kingman. So you have, and they do have some satellite ones, but they tend to be in those geographical areas. So they're only going to get rotation calls in those areas. And then also, it's not always between the different areas. Desert Lawn could be on a rotation in Kingman, but not in Lake Havasu. So their numbers would be there. So they're always going to have times that one area is feeding more. That's just good business practice that they were trying to expand and do out. Do I see a pattern here? The only side thing I can see right here, Mojave Memorial, in January of 2022, they had 27. I went and looked at those cases. It is interesting, look at death data, February, March, April, they always go down. You see all the numbers go down with everybody. If we go back and look at the death certificates, there's a natural decline. And then May, June, it goes up. I don't know if it's heat. You know, there's always determinants we're trying to figure out. But January and December, the numbers are up. There was two motor vehicle accidents that month. And there were significant suicides that month. And so go and look at that. But do I see that high number anywhere else? I don't. So there's, you know, it's a normal part of data that we can look into. But do I see the regular pattern when somebody's on rotation, having higher numbers and going down? Do I see any difference between that and any of Serenity Memorial Group's holdings? I do not. Do I see that in the others? And this one, here's Sutton, that's similar to Leeds Fraz in Lake Havasu, where they, even when they're not on rotation, they have higher numbers. But again, giving them benefit of doubt, understanding how rotation works, they're very well known. This is their original territory. They've been here for decades, you know. We have to understand that. So a lot of people know them in the community. So even on rotation calls, they'll get transfers in and those numbers will be reassigned. And it looks like they got a rotation call when it was them just working with the other funeral homes. That's the issue we've been dealing with with transparency. It's a challenge. I get it. And it's an opportunity for us to work together. And it's something that we're going to have to work on when the county inherits it. And we're going to have the same problem. The difference was is our past contracts, we didn't require this. It was there, but we just didn't put it out. And nor would Arizona Vital Records put any type of that information out because they didn't want the competition or the problems perhaps that is created between these businesses. That, you know, a rotation schedule provides a certain amount of clients. And that's important to businesses. And that's why we have rotation calls. But it can also become contentious, as we're seeing. So overall, that's the foundation. So at this point, to proceed, I, there was over 27 questions, I believe, or 25. I went through, asked them, and I did all the questions. Did you want to, how would you like to proceed from here? We are on a long day. Do you guys want to jump any specific questions? Do you want more information or better explained? Were the explanations good enough at that point? Or do you feel they need to be more in-depth? I would take your direction on how you'd like to proceed, so considering your time.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I can go through and read the answers to each one, but--
Your advisor.
I guess if he's going to go through all these questions, the, we don't have the answers here of what the problems were. Maybe if we had the people here from the mortuaries say, yes, we agree with the findings on that one, maybe we can move through these quicker, you know? Instead of having go egos through all his answers, then we come back and go, okay, now, number one, they have to remember what they were. I don't know if that would work out. You know, because we have, you know, you have a lot of, I guess I've had problems with the rotation numbers and those things. Not so much the rotation itself, but when the mortuaries were saying, we didn't receive bodies. You know, we're saying that we gave them 50 bodies and they're saying, we only got 30. So I guess that's part of it bothers me. But maybe if we started here, that might be the easy way to--
Sure.
If they answer the first one and they agree, then maybe we can move on and get over with.
So I'm just, I'll call off my, the forms up here, I guess. Naomi Bradbury. So Supervisor Johnson, we were asking them whether they agreed with the numbers that Dr. Kingsley--
Yeah, I think they'd have a better understanding of what's going on than we do. And if they agree, then, I mean, they could all stand up there at the same time if they wanted and they go, yeah, we agree with that. And we go on to number two, instead of having to call them all up every time. And if that works, sure, basically, I'd go quicker.
Sure.
Chairman and supervisors, I do have to point out one thing here with the numbers that Dr. Kingsley presented. First of all, of course, there would be a growth in 2021 because we didn't open till the last two months of 2020. So those stats would not be correct because you're missing 10 months there on that. Also, what it does not put into context is, one of the things that is happening right now in the industry is that there is a lot of body donation. So the body donations are strictly going through the Arizona AZ MR, which is the removal service, which is owned by Serenity Group. When those death certificates are done, they are done in Maricopa County because that is where those bodies are transferred to. And so Serenity Group is paid by the body donation places for that. It is also for Donor Network, that their transportation company is used for that. So that's going to skew the numbers there. That's why the death rate, as you see, is going down because there's been a push for body donation. The rest of the funeral homes, we used to be able to pick up those people and that we were paid by those donation places. However, for some reason, when we spoke with them last, they said that they've worked out an exclusive with the transportation company. So all of those are going there. So that can explain some of why those numbers are going down. So do we believe that? And the other thing is, we, when you look at the data, what we're asking is, why are you saying that these many people were released to us, but these many people were not? I've asked and asked. I still have not gotten that list so that we can compare our records to those records. So as far as the data, it looks very positive for Serenity Group up there. However, that data is skewed, in my opinion, because of us only being open for a couple of months, the one year that you're comparing to. And the other is that it's not including all the body donations, which there is a large portion. It also does not include those who pass on the edge of Mojave County and are taken to La Paz County to the Desert Lawn in Parker.
So are the numbers from the body donation services reflected in the--
No.
So those are not reflected on there at all?
That's a totally separate entity.
Okay. And that was just in reference to a reduction in the number of--
Correct. When he was saying that there seems to be a reduction in death, there's not a reduction in death. It's just that those death certificates are getting filed in Maricopa County.
Okay.
Because those are being taken out of the county. It also does not reflect any that are gone, that go through La Paz County with the funeral home they have in Parker.
Okay.
Okay.
But so the number, you're saying the numbers that they're showing you receiving on that chart are incorrect?
I'm saying that the numbers that are up there, it might be the death certificates that were filed in this county, but it does not talk about those that are sent out of the county that pass here. Does that make sense?
Yes, but so are you disputing the numbers that are on the chart?
I'm disputing the growth rate that they put for us because when you're only in business for two months, one year, and you're taking that as 12 months instead of two, it's going to look different.
Okay. So how about the second year then?
The second year is looking accurate. However, again, there is the issue of the body donation. But it still does not resolve the issue that originally we were told that we had received 22 people from the medical examiner's office and we received seven. So where did those others go? And we cannot get that answer. And we used to be able to get those answers when Dr. Mosley was running that.
Okay. Supervisor Angus?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the medical examiner so now we can get the answers right away instead of the accusations just lingering out there.
Mr. Chair, Supervisors, unfortunately, that's Samarian accuracy from the funeral homes. When a decedent transfers out of Mojave County for a disposition of whole body donation, the permit is still filed in Mojave County. It doesn't leave Mojave County to go to Maricopa County. So there's one funeral home in particular in the state of Arizona. It's David's Desert Chapel. They're the ones who file everything for Science Care. The one point of accuracy Ms. Bradbury had was that AZ MR, a transportation company that's owned by Serenity Memorial Group, does conduct the transportations. However, it's picking up at the place of death and transferring to the body donation facilities in Phoenix. They are contracted with, they are contracted with every body donation company, but that's just common sense on business practice to utilize the entity that covers the largest geographical territory for removals. But the permits are filed by, again, one funeral home and filed out of Mojave County. If a death occurs inside of a county, the permit for that individual is still filed in the county of death. So for example, the data that Dr. Kingsley provided is 100% accurate with regards to death certificates filed within those funeral homes for disposition. However, we process death certificate cremation authorizations for funeral homes all over the state, including Utah, for the ones that happen up on the county strip. So I just want to clarify with her statements with regards to that. Does anyone have any other questions regarding those? And Dr. Kingsley provided a trailing 12 months, not year over year. So that would be an accurate comparison from the opening in November to this year, or '21.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
I'm a little confused on these bodies that are going for research.
Okay.
Are you saying that if somebody has marked down, I guess, that they're an organ donor or whatever, research, use their body for, we still do the autopsy here or are we just shipping bodies?
No. So there's two types of body donation. There's whole body donation. And then there's donation for Donor Network of Arizona, which is the federally designated not-for-profit donation company for transplant. So it's the little heart on your driver's license. AZ MR has the contract to do transportation for the whole body donation companies and Donor Network for Mojave County and La Paz County. However, the funeral homes have an opportunity to transport if they so choose. If they do not, AZ MR does the transport. When a family has a death that occurs, that is where they've requested, let's just use Science Care, for example. They're the largest in the nation. When they request with Science Care, they're either a pre-registered donor or they are donating at that time of death. So Science Care will then contact AZ MR to pick-- So Science Care will then contact AZMR to pick the decedent up and transport into their care. Science Care contracts with David's Desert Chapel in order to file the disposition. We do not conduct autopsies or investigations on whole body donation cases unless there's some trauma involved in the death.
So I guess I understand what you're saying, but if somebody calls and says, hey, my father just died, or whoever died, you know, my complaining husband just died and he wants to donate his body, we don't do an autopsy? We just?
No, generally, whole body donation cases tend to be hospice deaths, hospital deaths, or attended at-home deaths. There'd be no purpose to autopsy without any signs of trauma.
Well, don't we have to have a doctor sign off? I mean, if I'm under somebody's care, I mean, we, just because you're old doesn't mean somebody didn't poison you and we have a lot of elder abuse now.
No, 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 that's not at all what I stated. So the PCP would be the one who would sign off on a death certificate for like a hospice death or an at-home death or an unattended, or an un, non-unattended death without a residence or at a hospital, for example, if they passed away in ICU. So anybody can sign up for donation. It doesn't mean that they are actually going to get approved for donation, but more than likely, it's the hospice doctor that was attending to that death or the PCP, primary care physician, who would sign off on that death certificate. The medical examiner's office would only sign off once the cremation permit is requested through Mojave County Medical Examiner's Office with the funds and proceeds being transferred to Mojave County Health Department.
I understand that. Now, we had a problem before where the physicians weren't signing off. Are we still having that problem?
Can you elaborate on that statement?
Somebody would die and we'd be under, the police would go there and they'd see all these pills from, from a doctor. They'd call up and say, hey, so-and-so just died and I know he was under your care. And they'd say, no, you're going to have.
The primary care physician, yes.
Yeah, primary care physician wouldn't sign off. So now, we county was having to foot the bill because they had to wait to get the medical records because, you know, Dr. Mosley just can't go in there without having their, their history.
Correct. So in a circumstance like that, there are times where a primary care physician or like a traveling emergency room doctor who might've seen a patient inside of a hospital discharged the individual and they passed away a couple of days later. In those circumstances where a doctor is not willing to sign a death certificate, that case is turned over to the medical examiner's office for review. It's called BNA, Body Not Admitted Case. So we then review the medical records and Dr. Mosley and the forensic manager, who's Susan Plore, she's the one who works closely with Dr. Mosley with regards to doing BNA cases. They're all done electronically. We've since gone from the days of old style, getting medical records, asking them to be faxed or dropped off or mailed in. We now have access to request medical records online. In the event that there are some hospitals that don't provide those records, we do have to get them the antiquated way, but we do that internally as a BNA case. Dr. Mosley does sign off or we'll kick it back over to a physician with this explanation as to why they need to sign off.
And this is not what we're here for today, but are we getting a lot of those? Because before, Dr. Mosley had said that he was getting an awful lot of physicians refusing to sign off.
We, I didn't do any research on our BNA case count, but that's something I can provide to Dr. Kingsley on our next meeting.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Ling and Filter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. I just want to make a comment on the rotation schedule. First of all, Dr. Kingsley, thank you for the data you have presented so far. You know, I became involved with this when I was procurement director way back in 2004, 2005, and I think it was the public fiduciary, Catherine Robbins at the time, that handed all of the mortuary rotation. The rotation schedule, even back then and probably beyond or before then, has always been hyper competitive. And I think that what we're seeing today is just inherent to the delivery model that we have right now. And I don't know what you can do about that. I think it's going to get better as public health department and public fiduciary become more involved, when we have our own facility, when we have perhaps a medical examiner on staff. But this rotation schedule has always been contentious and very, very competitive in my experience. And I'm not sure exactly how you 100% solve that, but by the data that you've shown, I'm not seeing anything to be incredibly alarmed about yet, so.
Supervisor Angus.
So at the core of it, what I'm hearing from the mortuaries that have shown up and have been here a couple of times now, is they don't believe that they are getting their fair share of bodies from rotation. And so from what you heard today and what we all saw, what is sort of the, either Dr. Kingsley or our medical examiner, what is sort of the answer that might alleviate some of the angst that's going on? Because they're obviously, they believe that, that they're not getting their fair share that's hurting their business. So what is the bottom line that we could make everybody feel, feel that everything that's going on is fair?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, so I think Dr. Kingsley's done an amazing job producing the data since the very beginning. And I also want to speak to Supervisor Ling and Filter's statement about the rotation. The rotation and procurement can correct me if I'm wrong in the statement. However, the Mojave County Public Fiduciary's office is the one who administer, sets forth and administers the indigent services program, which is also what dictates the rotation. Medical Examiner's Office has little to no say in some of those terms. We are involved and work with the departments, but we're not the ones who oversee the rotation. So for example, any funeral home can be on rotation, as Dr. Kingsley has stated. It's their opportunity to opt out. And if they so choose to take the entrepreneurial risk to be on rotation, that could mean, as you've seen in the slides, 27 cases in one month and then a following of 14 in the next. It could mean driving out to Meadview to pick up a decedent or traveling down the street next to the local hospital. The Mojave County Health Department has had full access to our records through not only the previous director, but the current director. And the epidemiologists on staff have access to the spreadsheet, if you will, that tracks all the data that was something that we have continued doing since Dr. Julie Jervis had initiated it in the very beginning. They also have access to MDI log, which is our new management platform for all of our case management and our reporting process. I think that in the past, the data that was originally provided was a dynamic set of data that as soon as it was updated on a spreadsheet, it would update if the website was refreshed. The data was also guarded by a user access, and this was in one of the statements that a funeral home made. It was also guarded by a user access where you had to log in to achieve that data. That data has since changed to a static set of data without a user restricted access due to the inability of the funeral homes to access or evaluate the data adequately. So we were asked to change the data fields that were represented in our website. But the data itself and the core balance of the information that the county health department has access to has never changed. The data that you saw there today was accurate as of when it was pulled, which by the date stamp, Dr. Kingsley was working on it about 1:00 AM on Saturday. So he, he has pulled adequate and accurate data. Now, I want something, something that needs to be elaborated on that Dr. Kingsley touched on is the fact that when we report a death, that the body might have gone to, I'm going to use Desert View Funeral Home in Kingman, for example. There's a common ownership between Desert View and Sutton and can potentially transfer over to Sutton for the permit. Our office does not go back and individually evaluate Dave's for every permit that is filed through Mojave County Health Department and then update our spreadsheet accordingly. So that information can change based on a funeral home, a body being released to Mojave Memorial and then transitioning to Leeds at a later date. So that information can change from the moment it's placed on the website to the actual moment of disposition. Your question was, how can we make sure that they are fairly and adequately compensated from a data standpoint? I would say Dr. Kingsley and his staff of epidemiologists and administrators have done a phenomenal job in doing so. We saw the spreadsheet. Couple of the statements that were made, that business has been impacted since the rotation changed or Serenity Memorial Group has taken a large amount of, of call volume since this contract. His department's a lot, has a lot more help than mine does, and I can tell you that he's adequately represented that data. We need to keep in mind that cases leave this county on a regular basis. We bill funeral homes in Maricopa County all the time for filing permits. Nothing from the Colorado Strip comes into this area unless it is a suspicious death, homicide, or if there's trauma involved. And everything returns back to the funeral homes in Utah, which are also Dave certified and allowed to process death certificates for decedents that come up from their territory. Mojave County's extremely large geographical county within the United States, I believe fifth largest in the, in the United States. And we have a big spread of people that transition out of county. So there is no transition from the border of Lake Havasu into the Parker facilities. And even if there are, we transfer to La Paz Funeral Homes all the time and file permits on their behalf. But again, it's funds that stay within Mojave County.
Okay. How many funeral homes are represented here from the people who have shown up? It's four altogether?
No, how many funeral homes?
Three, three different funeral homes. And how many are altogether in Mojave County?
Um.
Not including yours? How many more?
I have two. So it is four.
Well, I mean, ownership. I, I mean by ownership, I'm sorry.
It appears that there are two funeral homes represented here today outside of mine in addition.
This is Dr. Bradbury. I'm Mary Lee.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, three.
So Sutton, Leeds has Kingman, so and then the only other two not represented would be Diamond and Sons, which are Bullhead City and Fort Mojave.
Just Diamond and Sons? Anyone else?
No.
Has, have we heard from them as having problems? Okay. Well, they haven't, they haven't come forward.
But I know of granted when I first visited, I had, when I first spoke to some funeral homes, it was my third day of this work. And the first week was very challenging. I had a very difficult process. So I might have spoken to one of them during that first week. I can't remember when I came, I don't know who, but I can't remember who was on the phone. There was somebody listening on the phone and I can't remember if that was Diamond and Sons or not. So I have not spoken.
Okay, there was one more issue, and I don't know if it's the right time or if this is the way we're going to do it, something that was brought up at the call to public last, last meeting. But before I go into that, I just want to, you know, sort of tie this end up with the numbers. So you've been in charge, you've investigated as we asked you to investigate, and you stand by the numbers, you stand by our medical examiner who has been under scrutiny. So I want to get on the record that our public health department stands behind our medical examiner.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond to that, Supervisor Angus. So coming in, I've approached it from a neutral basis, a neutral basis. And procurement has been excellent at helping me on the point that we look at the contract. My goal is to defend the county, not to look at all things as much as I can objectively. Looking at that present information. Anytime any of the funeral homes are reached out, I try to respond promptly and to investigate any of their concerns. And I've treated, I've treated them, all of them that way. From our contract administrator, he has always responded almost immediately to any type of contact or information. He hasn't missed a monthly meeting. He, when I ask a question, he has a readily response. He doesn't have to try to, in any way, try to change that. I've had an excellent relationship with him and I've, I've had a fairly good relationship with the other funeral homes too. Our responses have been limited, but they are kind and professional to me. And so overall, just in my opinion, what I approach, my goal is to defend the county, protect them. And I would say that from procurement standpoint and my standpoint, I'm speaking for terror, that, that the contractor has met all obligations and continues to meet them.
Thank you. Now, again, I'm not, I'm not sure how we're going to do this with, with the ladies that are sitting there, but there was something that was brought up that troubled me at our last meeting. And so I did speak to the medical examiner about it and he did give me an explanation that, you know, I, I accepted. I don't know if there's more to the story, but what was said was that there was a death and I think it was a family member and that they had requested to go to your funeral home, but it, but that body ended up somewhere else. And so I asked the medical examiner and he told me about that, without giving, you know, information out or privacy, you know, HIPAA violations, just what happened to that body and how it ended up where it did. And if that's okay, I'd like to hear the answer to that because that was a big accusation. Can I, can we do that?
No, good. No, good. You have to specify on it.
The case that you are, there's two cases that, that we've come to the conclusion that they're, one of these two individuals, they're based on a confusion with regards to being on scene. ME 221539, I'd place it on there for review, but it has private information on there. The investigation was completed by supervisory investigator Veronica Dennis, who is with us today. The confusion lies within the deputy that was on scene made a clerical error that is, it's very possible to have been made. I've spoken to that deputy as well as our investigator has spoken to that deputy. And I can get into details, but I'm going to give you a quick, brief summary. There was an individual who passed away at a residence. It was an unattended death. They had had a history of some medical conditions and of stating to the family that they had not felt well. The investigator, the deputy contacting the investigator, who happened to be the supervisory investigator on scene, took that call. She did the investigation by phone and communicated with them. The deputy had gone to the next of kin that was on scene and they did not have a specific funeral home that was requested at that time, which as per the indigent services agreement, the reporting agencies are required to notify the rotation funeral home of that death. The rotation funeral home was notified of that death and they began, began a response. An additional family member came up and said, no, we will be changing this funeral home to Leeds and Kingman. The deputy, and this is where his mistake had come in, the deputy had stated, I do believe that it was affiliated with the rotation funeral home that's responding. Let me do some investigation because I know that there's an affiliate funeral home in Kingman. Before we cancel the drivers, I want to make sure that it is that individual. The other person that was on scene at that time said, nope, cancel them, we're going with Leeds and Kingman. The deputy did so. Upon speaking to him prior to concluding that that decedent was released to Leeds Frey's Funeral Home in Kingman. And speaking to the deputy, he said, I made an honest mistake. I know that someone is affiliated in Kingman. I don't know who it is and I specified that it is Sutton and Desert View. And he said, I made a mistake. It was an accident. You can use my statement for whatever defense that you need, but that is the clerical error that you, we are, you're referring to with regards to a case and law enforcement potentially. Speaking of an affiliation between Mojave Memorial and Leeds, the statement of that Mojave Memorial is using a reputation of Leeds tenure to establish better ground in conducting business, I think is a little outrageous, but that is the clerical error that we are in reference to. The other case that we were able to identify was a case out of Lake Havasu that was a statement that was made that it is not common practice and is out of the norm to notify, for an investigator to notify a funeral home. We've been doing that for years. That's been a practice of our investigative staff well before I took over this contract and they do it as a courtesy. They do it as a courtesy for law enforcement, family members and funeral homes. The investigator on scene, if they have a point of contact for the transport drivers at that time, they will shoot them a text and say, hey, do you have a, are you on call tonight? There's a death coming in at this location, you know, because there is a delay and from a reporting agency to get out to the funeral homes. If that's a process that you're requesting us to change, I'm happy to do so, but it's something that has been conducted for years as a courtesy to everyone involved in the death. The last one here was a statement that was made of a, of an ETA, an outstanding, a lengthy ETA for a call down in Havasu that again, was one that was released to Leeds Frey's Funeral Home. At that time, there were four investigators on at that day. One of the investigators had a family emergency and needed to leave home early, or excuse me, needed to leave town to go to a hospital in Vegas to be with their family. A representative from Leeds had contacted her, asking if she could respond to that call. And she said, no, unfortunately, I'm on my way to Vegas for a family emergency. The supervisory investigator Dennis responded to that call based on the fact that the other two investigators were on existing calls in Kingman at that time. 22 minutes after the call was received from Lake Havasu PD, she was en route, arrived on scene at 2136, which is 62 miles and an hour and 15 minute estimated drive time. County indigent services contract requires 30 minutes response plus drive time. So I would say that she's well inside the parameters of that, even though we're not, have to abide by that same response time. She was on scene for 36 minutes at the entire time of the call. And that would be the only other one that I can reference in the statements from the previous board supervisors meeting. I hope that answered your question.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Supervisor Johnson.
There was also an allegation that there was an autopsy performed and found that the person had choked to death when it was not ruled that from our coroner's office, and that the autopsy, the cause of death was in change without going through the state. Did this happen where somebody had choked to death and we missed it?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Johnson, without having the name in front of me, I have spoken to Dr. Mosley regarding a particular case that by looking at the information from that meeting, he was able to deduce that it was the one that we were in reference to, I believe, 78-year-old female who had passed away at the hospital. He had ruled that case ASCVD. I don't have the history that Dr. Kingsley does, so I can't pronounce arterial sclerotic.
I wouldn't know what it is anyways.
Yeah. Anyways, ASCVD is a general ruling that Dr. Mosley has used in the past, and he believes that that particular individual was the case that is in reference. I believe Dr. Michael Ilyeski, a private pathologist, performed the autopsy and found, possibly had found a chicken bone and had corrected that. If I had the exact case information, I could give you exact information, but it was not provided to me. And from the best of what Dr. Mosley and I could come up with, based on the statement, they he had determined that it was that particular individual. And his statement was that there would have been no way to see a, I mean, technically speaking, there would have been no way to see a chicken bone at at the hospital from a 78-year-old female that had passed away and ruled it ASCVD. But those are things that medical records are reviewed at that time to determine that ruling. But again, if you would like to provide me with that specific case, I could give you the full investigative report on it.
Okay, I don't have the information, but everybody has their pet peeves and what concerns them. And what concerns me is the abuse of our elders. And it's so easy to say, well, he was just old and he died, or she was just old and they died. And something like that bothers me when when we have something that comes through, especially if, you know, because you don't have the records, and I'm just going off what has been told me, this person didn't have problems with her heart before, and we just ruled it that because, what, they're old and they died, and so move them on down the road?
And I agree, and I agree on all those points and being able to always address that. And part of a process should be a peer review committee, and that could be part of the Board of Health, can be directed, and it would have to be closed so that we can review the information. We're really touching borderline here when we're revealing we need to have permission from the families to discuss more openly these cases. And so I would like to pull back a little bit, and because it has been discussed, but we do need to respect family. I don't think anybody who had lost a loved one would suddenly like to be tuned into YouTube and hear them randomly talking about their family, not knowing if they had permission or not to do that. So I just want to counsel on that a little bit. We do need to be sensitive. But as as at the same time, there's, yeah, there's, we need to be aware of that with seniors. There's a lot that goes into the medical side of it and the diagnosis they put down, the tendencies they do on being able to prove. And it's, again, it's not a cut and dry, to use an analogy or pun, but it's on those approvals, age, and any anybody in the medical field does get into those tendencies, I would say, you know, like a respirator, oh, everyone always fits this, I'm going to put this amount of respiration, how much you're going to breathe, you know? And so medical field, they'll get into repetition repetition, and sometimes it does take a process to identify stuff. Just just talk on that. And I believe Mr. Hassett has a comment to elaborate.
To speak to your statement about elderly elder abuse, I do completely agree with you. In the event that an investigator, a reporting agency, a hospice firm, or any medical personnel outside out at a hospital see any signs of trauma, our investigators do respond. In that particular case, again, if that was the case, there were no obvious signs of trauma reported by hospital staff, so that wouldn't in turn trigger an investigation. We have, on numerous occasions, brought hospice patients into our care for review in the event that they had fallen or hit their head and things like that. So I do understand where you're coming from and respect that greatly, and need you to know that any any signs of trauma that are reported by family or any reporting agency get responded to by an investigator and brought into our office.
Did the, have we looked into these descriptions discrepancies on the numbers of cases that funeral homes are saying that they received with the number that we're saying they received? Well, it seems to be a discrepancy of quite a few bodies somewhere.
Is that?
That's for the, Mr. Kingsley.
Can I just, I just have one more thing to add, just strictly based on an informational aspect, and then I'll step down for Dr. Kingsley to finish. Cyclical death trends, the amount of deaths that occur within a county, a state, and specific cities can change and do, you can see peaks and valleys in with regards to death volume. Total investigations for 2021 were 1,350. As of this morning, we've conducted 1,151 investigations. Even with those numbers, there'll more than likely be a trend down of about approximately 100 investigations by end of year. So the the data that is represented that he has as far as investigations and deaths that are brought into our office are represented in the spreadsheet that they have access to. So if there's no other questions for me, I'd like to yield my time to Dr. Kingsley. Thank you.
In response to, are we looking for the information? Yes, and I believe there's challenges to what the funeral homes are saying, and Denise Burley experienced the same thing. She would get a spreadsheet of the names, and I believe with Ms. Bradbury one time went over a list with, I have the call and the email and the documentation on it on the point that she spoke with you, but saying, well, tell me the name. And I can't, at that time, Denise, as I've explained before, in in public health, we tend to guard information, especially private health information. When it comes to this, the funeral homes are have AS, they have ARS law, they deal with vital records. And that's one thing that Arizona Vital Records have told me, that I can share information that's specific to the funeral home to them, nothing else. And so can I verify often that on some things, they still say, well, they need to come to us to get that information. But can I supply and go over a list of names of everybody that they've got a death record for? Yes. I'm still having a hard time completely understand where they're where they're saying that they have a certain number. And because in my in my mind, well, if you say that person is missing, you know, you have somebody assigned to you that you didn't receive, give me that name, and I'll look it up and see where it's at. I haven't been able to see that. I've looked at the data, I continue to look at the data, and I do not see the identification of missing bodies or a missing name. I called the FBI and spoke to them. Did you have anybody reports? Are you finding body parts? Are you finding missing bodies or families? If there's so many of these numbers, a percentage of families would step forward and say, like, where's my body at? And I haven't had one of those yet. But I have data that's showing me a death certificate for everybody that's been issued, and I have a rotation schedule that has names from the ME, the data that we look over. I have my my epidemiologist pull all that data, compare it to vital records, and they all match up. So I'm not sure, and I don't want to discredit any of the funeral homes anyway. We just need the collaboration to understand what are we missing between those two points that you're not seeing and I'm not seeing. I'm trying, and I think we need to continue trying that collaboration, but to this point, I have not identified or found those problems of missing numbers.
Well, it seems to me if you have that information and you can give it to the mortuary, so if we say we gave them 20, and they say, no, we only received 13, you can sit down and say, you know, did you get this guy? Yes, did you get this guy? And then when they get down, they say, I didn't get those four, you know, then we can, then we have something to look at. But until we share with them what names we say we gave them, which is not breaking any confidentiality because they're they're doing that, because that really does concern me when they, when the mortuaries are saying that many bodies they're claiming they didn't get. Maybe it's just a misunderstanding how we do it, but it needs to be cleared up.
Yeah, I don't, on those points, so last month, when previously there was a turnover incident within the medical examiners, the person who was doing the new cremation order, there are two points. You can generate it from a date of death, so the month in which they died in, or date of approval, approvals, a farther down process along the way. Here in each county, kind of, they they choose their different ones, and there's there's good points and bad points to both ones from what I understand. But if you choose date of approval of, you know, they've gone through the autopsy, they've gone through everything down to that process, or date of death, it's gonna, you're gonna have bleed over. If date approval, you're gonna have, you're gonna have deaths from the previous month. If it's date of, if it's date of death, you're just gonna have that month. And so this, so with changeover in the medical examiners, the initial, that process for sending the cremation permit out was first generated by date of death. After realizing that that was not the, how it was properly done, the the medical examiner addressed that, sent an email and said, I'm sorry, it was mistaken. This is the correct one, sorry, you know, I hadn't done the the finances for a good six months. And so I, here is the date of approval. Now, between those two, one was, for one funeral, one was 17, and one was three cases that carried over from October. The 17 had been paid for, and the funeral home felt like, why are you trying to make me pay for three more cases? My email response to that funeral home was that I gave that typed response in that email, and I responded, have have you have you paid doubly for those three cases? Are you leveling that those three individuals that you had to go and pay for are were not included, were included? And I did not receive a response. So there's those issues that happen. So I can see when that happens sometimes, and there's one set of numbers and a different set of numbers that are creating, and it's coming down again, things just to a type of data flow and how things are pulled out of the system. And so those issues with collaboration could be helped cleared up, but I think it's been ongoing, as Supervisor Lingefeldter has said, for a very long time.
Man.
It's a challenge, yeah. We will continue to work towards that, and obviously, I have two years to get everything ironed out and try to step into it. As I said, this is opportunities for the funeral homes and all of us to establish a relationship so that when that transition does happen, we can do it together and not just the county stepping forward and doing it. I would like that. I'd like to, if we have a quarterly board with the funeral homes that come in, we can bring cases and issues, what's going on, and compare the data, and with medical examiners in the funeral homes, sit down, compare that data and work together.
And hopefully, we can put an end to it today, or at least at least track what's going on. In 25 years, I've never even knew these mortuary people were, but since we've had this changeover, we have, what, four of the mortuaries that are here, five out of six? Mr. Chair, I don't know if maybe we could hear from the mortuary people to find out what questions they they would like us to make sure we have answered today.
Sure.
Listen to.
That was where I was going earlier.
Let's see.
Kristin Leeds.
I'm here not because of fairness of rotation, but I am here because we have a problem with the numbers. So yes, it is true. We had problems with our numbers, and the medical examiner went and placed all the numbers on their website, which, per their agreement that was done, is supposed to be in a secured login location for funeral homes only to see, not for the public. The second thing is, is I was very nicely provided the new numbers that were on screen today, showing the new numbers with all the hard work that they have done. So with that being said, I had been working on this since January with the police department. I have full reports of all deaths, other than a few sheriff and a few, one DPS officer report missing. All of my numbers match theirs. So the medical examiner's website shows that I am missing 108 cases. Now, the numbers that were provided to me with all the hard work that they just did, I'm still missing 34. You tell me where they're at. I'm here because I don't want it coming back on me that there are numbers that are wrong. I've asked for names. We've been asking since January, and we can't get them. So that's in your hands now. I'm done doing this. I'm not going to fight he said, she said kind of stuff. This is serious. They worked so hard on this, but you still got 34 bodies missing. And you know what? If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to provide you the documentation, all of that, because I opened up my books and I did my work. I don't understand why it's so hard for them to prove back to us, because the bodies either went to another funeral home. Again, we have a problem with data, which I don't know how difficult that is. Everybody's given this cute little yellow sheet with the number on it, and each funeral home is listed on that, and you put them in a little pile, and you make a little Excel sheet, and boom, there it is. It's a very simple process. If we can't get the data correct, then what else isn't being done correctly? Now, again, the numbers are either they're wrong, obviously. Those bodies are going to other funeral homes, we have bad data, or are those bodies being sold on the black market? Right? Because that's what people would say. Because here's the thing, when it comes up that way, and there is a problem, and yes, we may have not heard from the FBI as of today that we have missing bodies, right? But when it comes up and there is a problem, and I've been told that I was released 34 bodies from that medical examiner's office, and somebody comes looking for one of those bodies, and I don't have it, I have no proof to show I didn't receive it. Thank you.
So we can discuss, Mr. Kingsley, the bodies that they've been issued since they already are supposed to have this information anyway?
From the.
Names of these people, or their numbers or something?
Previous contracts, I would have to go back and look again what they maybe procurement could be able to provide what.
I think that's what he's asking.
Okay.
I think he's asking if they were told that they received seven bodies from the medical examiner's office, can you go through those listed names with them and find out what the strengths?
Yeah.
Form you received from the medical examiner's.
Yeah, for the cremation permit or?
Mr. Chairman, we can't hear them.
Sorry.
Come on.
Yeah. This is the form that we receive from the medical examiner's office. Every time we receive a body, it has the funeral home's name on it, who is released, and it also has the our signature of who was picking up. If you have these in your ME's office, you have the name of the person in the funeral home. We didn't get a million-dollar contract. We should be able to have software out of the ME's office to do this. I don't understand why we can't get names. I understand that you have all these, while I'm here as well, I'm just going to talk about these things, data sharing and all that. That's, this is one. They should be able to be able to give us who we received.
Let me stop you, because every time I try to get my line of questioning in, everybody goes off on their own tangent. It's my meeting, so I get to ask the questions. So you don't have, you're short 34 of those yellow forms?
Yes.
That's what that boils down to. And those are all associated to people's bodies?
Yes, sir, and a copy, the white copy gets kept in the ME's office, and the yellow copy goes with the funeral home. If you have the names of who were released, why can't we get those?
So we need to take, find the white copies and find out what the discrepancy is and see what happened to the 34 bodies?
And they can only come from the medical examiner's office. The state of Arizona data Dave system cannot give you those names. They only can give you the names of the funeral home of record, which, if we are Bradbury, whoever, these give us the body and who they were released to. That should be simple from the ME's office.
And those tell where the who signed for the body? She is 100% accurate. This document comes from the medical examiner's office when the funeral home picks up a decedent from our care and is transitioned into their care. They're handed that sheet. So long as that decedent is run through the medical examiner's office, the statement that Kristin Leeds made earlier about it being secure on the website, you're absolutely correct. It was. I was asked by the department, the health department, to remove that feature. Okay? So you are accurate in that statement, but if the decedent is a rotation call or is a hospital ME decline, they won't have that sheet.
But we're talking about rotation numbers, though.
Correct, but the numbers that are represented in that, in those numbers are anything that gets turned into our office. So, for example, if hospice or hospitals turn in data that that a case was released to Leeds Phrase, we track that body as going to that location. The spreadsheet that the health department has access to, you could, in theory, go down line by line and case by case to determine where that decedent is at a funeral home. You would also in turn need to cross-reference Daves to make sure that the cremation permit was filed by that funeral home for that specific decedent, and that it didn't transition to another funeral home at a later date. So can we get a list of of those 34 bodies that we that they claim they never got, but we claim that they that we sent to them, so that we can figure out what's the deposition of those 34 people?
So, yes, I, if vital records says I can release that, the first public records I request I received from Leeds was last Thursday. I have been working on these things, but I am promptly to respond to them, to provide public record of all names that were provided to them from January 2022 to them, providing those names and those case numbers. They can review that if they find any missing at that point from the medical examiners. We can take. If they find any missing at that point from the medical examiners, we can take it from that point. That's where we're at. So that was the first public records request that I received, was last Thursday.
Okay. So that is going to get done in a timely manner?
By Arizona laws, promptly as I can. Obviously, I was working all this for this weekend. That would be my goal today, if I could have it to them by today or tomorrow, making sure that's accessible and such things. I have to verify just real quick with Arizona, because they have been touchy-filly about this, but I do need to verify with them that they, I, yes.
Because that seems to be one of the heart of the matter, is that, is these 34 unaccounted four bodies?
Okay. And I don't know if they're unaccounted, you know, so I would say that 34 in question. Are they unaccounted? They probably, they might not be unaccounted, so you know, how we're using, how we're referring to them, I think it's just our lack of knowledge, the difficulties we have with our data could be the problem. Could there be a problem? Could they be missing? There could be. But so far, like I was saying, in our investigation, I haven't ever come across that, when I look at the data, that something nefarious is happening. And so I don't like, I have a challenge that that information is misleading, when we use that type of terminology, that these bodies are somewhere out and lost.
My ears are getting tired.
What's that?
My ears are getting tired.
Mine too.
There's some, there's a discrepancy of 34.
Okay.
I want to find out where that 34 is.
Okay.
Where did the 34 go?
For the public records request, and if any of them wish to make a public records request more...
I don't think I have to do a public records request to ask you to do something, though.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I'm just saying, per that one, and any of the other ones, I'm provided, but I have provided the names, made them available, and Denise did too, on previous points. And so at this point, yeah, I continue forward, but on this one, I have that one, but any other one that would like that, yes, and continue to work with them.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
You want to go, you can...
My only thing I...
Anyone else want to talk about discrepancies of numbers before we move on to something else? Okay, now go ahead and share your other...
As far as this and getting the names, it shouldn't break any HIPAA. We would be listed as the funeral home of record, so we have the right to those names, so it shouldn't be a problem, and it has to come from the ME's office, you can't get it from the state. These forms are through the ME's office.
Okay.
And I doubt he's going to be able to get them that fast, because you have to go through all these pieces of paper, unless they already have the names.
I'm sure he will work diligently to get that information.
So we're only talking about discrepancies?
Is it on numbers, ma'am? Are you, you still on discrepancies, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm, the only thing I wanted to say is...
Let her finish up, and then I'll...
Discrepancy about cases, I have some other things, but when he gave numbers as far as death certificates being printed, that is just, is that actual people, or is that numbers of death certificates? I just want clarification.
So this is my first foray into finding that, as I stated at the beginning, this is the first compilation of it. I'd have to sit down, go over it, and I had a date of death, I had a name, I had a case number specific, so that's what I saw on those processes.
Okay. And the numbers between 22 and 21, as far as, I didn't see any Bullhead numbers, and Deserelon is down. Diamonds and Sun went on rotation recently down there, so their numbers will be skewed a little bit from 21 to 22.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bradbury.
I just want to say, with the issue, what I was talking about, the bodies going out and those numbers, maybe we should have that particular funeral home who's filing those death certificates for the body donations, to have those stats also. That would help us. And, other than that, I think that was my only question on that one.
Thank you, ma'am. So, Mr. Kingsley, do we know how many those, the bodies that went to the body donation?
No.
No?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
That's considered to me.
That, those numbers can be found in the report that is given to the health department with who's filing the permits. So, again, for example, just reference points, Science Care uses David's Desert Chapel. So if you look at the statement that's given to the Mojave County Health Department when funds are released to them for the cremation permits, you'll see how many they filed through David's Desert Chapel. It won't specifically say that it's a whole body donation, in the event that David's Desert Chapel came down and picked up a decedent to do forwarding of remains or a cremation, but you can see in that report all the different funeral homes that file cremation permits in Mojave County. Okay. So, we wouldn't have access to determine if that case actually went to whole body donation, and neither would the health department, we wouldn't know that, but what you do see is all permits filed in the county. So do they, when they separate the body parts, they don't have to account for that? I, I, no, technically, you mean, are you the whole body donation companies? Right. So, they, they'll utilize a funeral home to file those permits, but again, they come over as cremation authorization permits. So, every whole body donation would end up filing a cremation permit, so long as they pass away in Mojave County. They'll, those particular funeral homes will file in whatever county of death that individual passed away in, but we, we as the medical examiner, and then Dr. Kingsley as the health department, would not know whether it was a whole body donation followed by cremation, or a death direct to cremation. Because that's not a, that's not an end disposition when filing a permit. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
I'm still a little confused, I think, on this. Does a medical examiner keep track of every death in the county?
Every death that's reported to us, Supervisor.
So, can, go ahead. Can there be a...
I can elaborate.
If somebody just dies, and let's say the doctor says, yeah, I've been treating him, and he was in the last stages, and I'm going to sign off, does that still get filed with you?
If it's a cremation.
But only if it's a cremation?
Correct.
So we could have doctors, does anybody keep track of the, are these death certificates numbered?
State vitals, yes.
And who's supposed to be taking care of, watching over the death certificates, if some doctors writing off, you know, 10 or 20 deaths a year?
So, I want to clarify, these are kind of two different topics of conversation. Your original question was, does every death that occurs in Mojave County get reported to the medical examiner's office? They are supposed to. Hospice has a form that they fill out to record, to report those deaths, as well as all the hospitals in the area, unattended deaths, law enforcement, anything like that. Everything is supposed to be reported to the medical examiner's office. We assign numbers based on investigation, so the medical examiner investigation number does not correlate with the total deaths. If you wanted to see total deaths in a county, you could get that information from Arizona State Vitals. We have the ability to pull cremation authorization numbers, so, I don't remember who was speaking earlier, but when they said that we don't have the ability to pull the name, we can pull a name, a cremation authorization permit report from the Dave's system, and get a name and a filing funeral home and a date of death to correspond, but it's only going to be cremation as far as permitting goes from there. I don't know if that answered your question, but she may have some clarification on that.
Okay.
As far as the tracking of donation bodies?
Go up to them, Mike.
Sorry, as far as tracking the donation, the permit should be listed as donation cremation, so those are easily tracked?
We don't, we don't track that, though, is what I'm saying.
Okay, but you might not, but there is, the permit has to be listed as donation cremation when it's a donation. It's not just a basic cremation. So if there's a way to track that, or usually donation companies, Science Care for one, they are the funeral home of records, so you can tell by their records if it's Mojave County or not.
Yes.
If they wanted to.
She's accurate, but our office doesn't track those numbers. So if you asked me, if you asked me today how many homicides we'd have, I could look that up and give you that, homicide, suicide, MBAs, et cetera. I couldn't tell you how many go to donation, though, is what my statement is.
I guess this is what, has concerned me from the, from the beginning, and it's not what the coroner we have now, but since I've been on this board, we've had coroners in the past that have pre-signed death certificates and send them up to Colorado City, for them to fill in as needed. We've had coroners who said, well, you guys only contract for X amount of autopsy a year, and I'm done. So those are the reasons that I'm concerned. I guess it does still bothers me that we don't really have one repository of death certificates in the county where you can call up. Maybe that's standard policy, I don't know, but it just, it seems strange that we wouldn't have, be in the coroner's office, everything wouldn't have to be filed, so we had one thing to, so that we could look and say, Dr. Jim has seemed to signed off on 34 deaths this year, and maybe we should take a look at Dr. Jim or something, you know? That's getting off the subject, but that's...
Back in the day, when there were paper death certificates, yes, you're absolutely correct, pre-signing a stack of permits or DCs. It's possible that the health department can pull that data from vitals, that's where you're going to get the information from, is Arizona State Vitals.
So I think for now, getting that, those 34, because that seems to be the issue, right, is the numbers. So when you get the 34, and maybe it will, you know, everybody can figure it out, it will be self-explanatory, or maybe there is a problem, but I think that that's going to open up, that's going to tell a big story. Correct?
Just my comment is, I hope when my day comes, that you all fight over my body. It would be an honor.
Thank you for a laugh.
And we would definitely, I'll fight over you.
Chairman Gould. Supervisor Langenfelter.
If I might add just one comment to you, Dr. Kingsley, you mentioned before that perhaps you initiate, if it's not already happening, some sort of a quarterly open invitation for everybody to come across, or come, you know, at the same table. Hopefully, that offer still stands.
Definitely.
And people don't have to wait, you know, a year, or whatever it is, for something to explode, right? You just sort of be proactive and work together.
Yes.
On an ongoing basis.
If I can this week, I'll send an email, try to coordinate that again, and continuing forward, and it's, as I said, I hope we'll be able to do that and work together, so. So as it stands now, I think with the presentation, there's no recommendation, there's no motion needed, I just, we'll investigate those, that number of bodies, as well as provide any of the funeral homes, those lists, as much as accurate as we can, to see what we can identify and work together and help clarify this up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Krista Hunter, did you need to speak? You were, okay. And then Scotty McClure, you need to speak?
Why do you make it so difficult to be buried and expensive? This is unbelievable, I didn't know any of this stuff, and apparently, none of you guys did either. Fair share of bodies, hily. Got to make sure, we got to have a rotation, so everybody gets rich off of us. I have a revocable trust, in fact, the girls that kicked you out of your office, you know the ones next door? Through them. So they are instructed on what to do, they are instructed, the only thing I have in that trust, that I asked for, or I demanded that, in order for my niece to get the key to my place, is that she buries me in the Boulder City National Cemetery. And if I end up and die in Bullhead City, and I end up in Lake Havasu, is that for real? At a mortuary down there? So then she's going to have to pay travel costs to get me up there? I even instructed these people to let her throw me in a casket and take me up in the back of my pickup, which is legal, they will accept you if you have the paperwork at that national cemetery up there. By the way, it's run by the state in Nevada. I showed up with my paperwork, by the way, veterans, sign up beforehand, you can get accepted with your DD 214 and ID. I am pre-accepted there, and it can be transferred, transferred, if I die in California, I can be buried in the nearest one. I also got to pay a fee if I go into Nevada and die here, I have to pay in Nevada a fee to be buried in that state. I have to be embalmed. I don't know where you guys are going with this, but everybody's going to get their fair share of bodies, is that what we're here today to do? I'm confused now. I guess I got to move to Nevada and Boulder City and just save a whole bunch of money? This is unbelievable. I guess we're doing procedures, Dad, I don't know where you guys are going, discussion and possible action, I don't know what action you're going to take. You're not going to do any act, I don't see, I don't see this, I'm reading this whole paragraph here. But I think this needs, I have asked them, they have a size of casket that you have to have, you cannot have one bigger. Then they tell me to go to a funeral home. For my other questions, you know, these people are going to, the girls are going to get me a permit, my niece a permit, a death certificate and all that stuff, so they'll just hand her that stuff, and then she can take me up there, or hire one of these people to take me up there. Like I say, she can throw me in the back of my pickup in a casket, legally, take me into that cemetery, as long as she has the paperwork.
Thank you, sir. Let's see. Item 43.
Mr. Chair, before we go on on that, I wonder if somebody else wants to speak?
I was wondering if I could give these to you guys?
Sure, if you can, look here.
But I would like to see, you know, something come back to us with, you know, that everybody met, and we found the, where the number discrepancies are, instead of just saying, well, they'll meet, and then I got to listen to people call me up, saying, hey, we didn't meet, or whatever else.
So you'd like the health director to report it back to the board?
Report back to the board with the, with the findings.
Thank you, sir. Item 43, Supervisor Langenfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. This item is a proposal to approve up to 14,500 of District One ARPA to cover the tuition costs for a seven-week online training course called Profit Mastery, offering that up to Mojave County's resident stage one and stage two small business community, which makes up the majority of our regional economy. Those are stage one, one to nine employees, or those companies that are stage two, up to 99 employees. As we've all seen over the past two years and continuing, they continue to suffer from supply chain shortages, rampant inflation, staffing level challenges, and there's a lot of fear out there with perhaps a recession that a lot of people think that we might be going into. So this is just to offer up something to perhaps up to 100 of our small business community in Mojave County, if they think that they can benefit from this training. It's going to be provided through a partnership with the Mojave Community College Small Business Development Center, any of our interested chambers of commerce, and hopefully, it will continue past the seven weeks with a collaboration. So hopefully, I can get support, in support of all of our small business community here in Mojave County. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Let's see, one person requests to speak, Tanya Dowson.
I have a visual presentation, so. Is it working? There we go. There we go. Good afternoon, Tanya Dowson, Mojave County taxpayer. We are all born with different strengths and weaknesses, either from nature or from the environment we live in. Now we're being bombarded with messages through diversity, equity, and inclusion indoctrination to believe that these differences are inequitable or unfair. We are being instructed that some of the advantages we have must be compensated for by the government, which is really the taxpayers. Equality is being mischaracterized. Today, people are being taught that it's the government's job to give everyone the same thing, in this case, identical blocks to stand on. They claim this is equality. Under this scenario, some are still better off than others, so in their mind, equality is unfair. In reality, our government was not designed to give people stuff. Our government doesn't have anything to give that it hasn't first taken from someone else by force. Our government was designed to give people equal protection under the law, so they can peacefully pursue their own goals. That's the American way. Under today's new ill-conceived notion of equity, the government ensures that each person gets what the person population needs to live a dignified life, but where does the government get the money for the stuff that it gives away? That would be the taxpayers. Karl Marx said, "From each according to his ability, to each according to his needs." Many people are forced to pay their taxes, even though they may not have enough money left over to pay for their medical bills, car repair, home repairs, clothes, et cetera. As a direct result of those taxes, medical staff, auto mechanics, home builders... As a direct result of those taxes, medical staff, auto mechanics, home builders, seamstresses, and countless others have less work, they buy fewer goods and services, start fewer businesses, and the downward ripple effect grows. Compulsory charity is unethical and un-American. Bottom line, the money, taking money from some and giving it to others who didn't earn it harms the people the money was taken from. Be that as it may, the government is using the American Rescue Plan to advance equity as explained in the White House's 300-page publication, Advancing Equity Through the American Rescue Plan. The Department of Treasury explains in its publication, "The American Rescue Plan centering racial equity in policymaking," that equity is a top priority. And to promote accountability, the Treasury will discuss with local governments how their expenditures advanced equity. The American Rescue Plan is compulsive charity and is therefore un-American. Please reject the American Rescue Plan funds and the bad precedent it sets for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Langefelter.
Thank you. I just want to assure everybody that's in attendance today and in the audience that this program has absolutely nothing to do with social equity, class equity, gender equity. It's simply an optional program that our small business community would be able to take advantage of to help them as they continue to battle the effects of what we've all been dealing with over the past two years. It's been decimating their profit margins and I would hope that every one of the small businesses that can, that choose to take advantage of this are all paying their taxes. So.
Supervisor Angus.
No, I just want to thank Supervisor Langefelter for another great ARPA project, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. You've heard that motion and second any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 44, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, we are going to ask to continue this item if we could to the next board meeting, please.
Do I need a vote?
I'm sorry. We needed to move it to the second meeting in January is when they need to have it done.
Do we have to do it to a specific time and place or can we just do it to the future?
I'd rather we pick that one. Let me get the date for that.
Chairman Gould, the date of that meeting would be January 17th.
Yes, thank you.
So I need a motion to move or continue item 44 till the January 17th meeting of 2023?
So moved.
Motion to continue?
You've heard that motion?
Second.
You've heard that motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 45, Supervisor Angus.
Okay, it's been a long meeting and I was hoping I was going to have to do this at this, at this stage, but the election came out different than we thought, whether I like it or not, it's not the issue at this point. Back at the end of 2021, this board was approached to pass the 1776 resolution. We had a vibrant debate, I went back and listened. The debate went on over a course of three meetings. We finally did pass a resolution, but it was geared more towards COVID. Now we look at the country and it's a much different country than even it was a year ago. However, Mojave County is still the solid conservative constitutional county I ran to protect 11 years ago. This election bore that fact out. But I fear that with this particular governor and this particular Secretary of State, we may be in for some orders that may or may not be constitutional. So I bring this basic resolution and I want to thank Ryan Esplin for putting this together, a basic, just, you know, statement that we, you know, it seems like a no-brainer, but that we abide by the Constitution. I bring it for discussion and possible action to see if others believe, like me, that this is necessary. And if so, does it need stronger language and have, and should we put some more teeth in it to ensure we can fight things that come down the pike that may be against the constitutional as we did for the Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution that we passed unanimously in 2019? That is what I want to hear from the board. If you want to put the same kind of things we put in that Second Amendment Resolution that basically says, and I gave each of these amendments, these resolutions to you through the clerk of the board. And so the last sentence of Resolution 2019-118 was that be it further resolved that this board will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, detention centers, or offices for the purpose of enforcing laws that unconstitutionally infringe on the people's rights. This one says to keep and bear arms, but I would just leave it at rights. So that's what I want to hear and we can send it back to the Attorney's Office to come up with something that is more the what we, the he hears today.
Did something change over the, since the last time? I think the attorney gave us the opinion that these resolutions mean absolutely nothing.
Well, they are, well, resolutions are basic statements from the county. We make a lot of resolutions. It's more for us to tell our constituents, our residents here, that Mojave County is still where we were all the years ago. That's when we talked about it in 2019 and 2021 and that we will still fight for the Constitution. And again, we did pass that one, but it was geared really towards COVID, if you can see what I passed out. So I would like us to vote to accept a resolution, either this one, which I think is a little too basic, or would the majority of the board like to send it back to the attorney so that we could see something a little bit stronger language?
I guess the problem I have with this is, what are we at, non-constitutional county now? I mean, I took an oath, we all took an oath, signed the form that we will obey the Constitution. I don't think anybody up here is not following the Constitution. This reminds me of they and them and nil and zil. People just make up names and put it on there. We're now going to be what, people have to refer to us as Mojave County District 3 Constitutional Supervisor Johnson? I mean, this seems to be just pushing the woke agenda right into what, we're just playing into their hands. We are.
Them's fighting words. Supervisor.
I'm ready to fight, I don't care.
My goodness. No, and also, there's another part to this, and that is, I've been told by our economic development that she mentions that, that we are a strong constitutional county and that it gets the people here that want to come here, that are leaving California. It's no big harm to do, but I think it makes a statement that is overriding about who we are as a county as we get sort of lost in all of this mayhem.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
So like Supervisor Johnson pointed out, I think we are a constitutional county. We don't have to tell people we are, we can show that by our actions. But I have taken the oath of office to uphold the Constitution at least 10 times, more than that, over the last 30, 35 years. I've never violated that oath and I don't intend to violate it now, sitting on this board. This is a political statement, another one, but yet one that maybe I could agree with. But this is not a function of county government. We're not the arbitrators of the Constitution of the United States or Arizona for that fact. But if, if we want to make this political statement, I could possibly buy into it if there was another whereas added to this that said, when it comes to interpreting and applying in the law, the Arizona Supreme Court and the United States Supreme Court are the final arbitrators of the law respectively. If that was put in there, it, it means absolutely nothing. But without that statement, it kind of looks like we're trying to be the, the legal decision makers of what's constitutional and what's not as far as this.
Supervisor Langefelter.
The way I read it, it's, it's just a reemphasis of our oath of office and, and I don't have a problem with that, you know, and it might be just a statement and, and the courts of law, it might really not matter, but I think to a lot of the people that we represent who put us here, it's a statement that does matter to them. So I think it's consistent with our oath of office, I would support it.
Does that mean, like Buster said, we're not following the Constitution now or we're an unconstitutional county now?
We're just reminding them that we're following the Constitution.
But they challenge that at every meeting, that they say everything we do is unconstitutional, you know, kind of, that's an exaggeration, but that's what some of the speakers say meeting after meeting, you're violating my constitutional rights. And we have a parliamentarian here with us, our deputy county attorney, that his job is to keep us in line and make sure that we follow the Constitution. Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
When, when we voted for the Second Amendment Sanctuary County, we didn't put that language in and I believe you voted yes on it. So it's in the same vein as that. And so what that means.
It's kind of like if you don't vote for it, you're voting against it and, you know, it's kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't, but we follow the Constitution. We believe in our Second Rights Amendments without these resolutions.
Right. And what we were in fear of with that is that the state, and they were talking about it, red flag laws, things like that, that those things that if they happen, we would not, we would not go by. And if it had to be legal, it had to be a legal fight, a court fight, so be it. But, you know, that, that's all this really is. But I'd like to add that final statement or else it's just, it is a statement saying, yeah, you know, we took an oath and, yeah, we are, this is, makes it, bumps it up a bit to the next level. I'm assuming you're talking about the statement I read? Oh, no, I'm sorry. But I think we could, well, I want to say it again, that statement, if you don't mind.
Whereas, when it comes to interpreting and applying the law, the Arizona Supreme Court and the United States Supreme Court are the final arbiters of the law respectively.
The problem with that is if we take a look at the overturn of Roe versus Wade, I would have never spent money to provide abortions out of county funds. So I don't know that I want to be held by what nine people in black robes dream up, but I'd rather be held to the plain reading of the Constitution. I also don't want to be held to the improper interpretation of the 14th Amendment that says the stuff applies to states or the people.
I'm sorry, I'll just jump in at the risk of being, offending everyone, but you need somebody to interpret that. And the way our model works is the judiciary interprets that. It's a co-equal branch of government, all three, but somebody's got to be able to interpret that. And that's, that's the way we've, the system of, of government that we have, that the United States has built. Who else would interpret it?
The board can interpret board actions.
Sure. And if it's challenged and it goes to court, it'll be the court that will make that interpretation.
Of course.
I mean, we, the, the rights of the people are with the people and you have that. And the courts will respect the decisions you make. I can show you countless amounts of opinions where the courts say, we defer to the legislative branches, we defer to them, they often do. But at some point, if the legislature has voted on something that is beyond what the Constitution allows them to do, somebody has to make that call and a judge will make that call. That's the way our, our system works. That's why it's a three equal branches of government. The executive will have, decide things that are executive, the legislature will make some, and then the judiciary.
No, I'm aware how the system works. I just disagree with the rulings that come down from the Supreme Court and don't want to be bound to supporting their rulings.
Oh, I've, I've been on the, I've been on the short end of a lot of rulings from judges that I disagree with. I, I can give you countless times where I've thought, Judge, that wasn't the right call. But at the end of the day, I respect it and I say, you know, I, I don't like it, I disagree with it, but my client's going to have to serve 10 years or whatever the, whatever the sentence was, or whatever the agreement was, or whatever the court ruling was. And that's just the way the system works. Plenty of times when I've disagreed with the judge, but at the end of the day, that's what I follow.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Johnson.
Yeah, I don't know when this board has ever run from a fight. I mean, we've taken on lawsuits of everybody and no matter whether it's the feds or the state or anybody else, we're just an arm of the state. I think it makes it seem like we're not, not doing our jobs now if we go, oh, now we have to make this resolution that we're there. And it, and I really think that it just starts to add on to the wokeness of society that we have to call ourselves by a special name, I guess.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
Let me make an example, because we've been getting a lot of rules from the Secretary of State's office about elections, right? Some of them are just downright bizarre. You ask our recorder. And so let's just say, because we have an extremely liberal-looking-like Secretary of State, let's say that, that he does something and he says every county has to do it and for some reason our Arizona Attorney General doesn't choose to fight it. Well, I think at that point, that is beholden on the local boards to say, wait a second, uh-uh, that's not going to, and, and I can foresee that happening, unfortunately. Like I said in the beginning, I was hoping not to have to do this. Those are the kinds of things that I said, hopefully we'll never have to use it, never talk about it, but I think it's, it's a statement of fight. I said that during the Second Amendment and I say that now. It's just, it's a statement of who we are and what we're willing to, the hill we're willing to die on.
Well, just to give you an example to that, we have that today where we've had interpretations and rulings by the Secretary of State on election matters and people have challenged it. We're current, Mojave County is currently parties to that, either Mojave County or the recorder, excuse me, the recorder are parties to that. I'm currently representing our, representing the recorder in probably five or six different cases. Some of those are challenging, well, I think all of them are challenging laws that were passed by the Arizona Legislature. But you've seen one that was challenged in Yavapai County of an interpretation by the Secretary of State. I mean, there, there's a process in place to challenge those and go through the legal process of doing it.
But in the meantime, are we following those rules that we're finding until a decision is made?
So it depends on how the court acts. So I'll take the court actions we have right now. In some of them, there are preliminary injunctions in place that prohibit us from implementing the things until the court has issued a ruling. So these are, these are from the last legislative session where the legislature has passed laws that people are challenging. And so they've imposed preliminary injunctions that prohibit Mojave County and the recorder from implementing them until resolution from the court. That's, that's the purpose of the.
So again, I just don't see the harm in this to make this kind of statement if we're doing it already, why is everyone so, what's, what's the harm? So.
Make your motion.
Okay, so I make, well, I make.
Add that last.
Yeah, if we could add from the last paragraph of the 2019-118 Resolution, be it further resolved that this board will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, detention centers, or offices for the purpose of enforcing laws that unconstitutionally infringe on the people's rights. We can leave out those last few words. So I make a motion that we approve that with that additional wording.
So you're going to strike, add an S to rights and strike, to make rights and strike to keep and bear arms?
Right.
Where do you want to put that?
At the last.
Last one.
Yeah.
Are you willing to add that whereas that I suggested?
I don't, I think that just puts us back. Like what we're saying is we will not, but you're saying that, I mean, if the courts say we're going to do it, we have to decide, you know, as a board, whether we believe that the courts are right. And if we, it's a legal battle, that's going to be up to us. But let me ask the other supervisors how they feel. What do you feel about Supervisor Bishop?
Supervisor Angus, just for clarification, on, on the first draft of the 2022-217, the be it further resolved, are you wanting the be it further resolved statement added to that one or replacing that one? Do you understand what I'm asking on that?
The second be it further resolved.
That's, that's on there already then. The board should recognize the Arizona. That's already on there.
Right. So this is this one, and then you read this statement that, do you want it to replace it or add to it?
Okay. Resolution number 2022-217. One second.
No, you were going to insert this final.
Yeah, and but, but we have that, that, right. Yeah, and, but, but we have that, that, right.
Further resolved.
Right.
And this is what you want to add? Do you want to add it, or is this replacing that?
Yeah, let's, but yeah, that's what I want, to replace that last paragraph.
With this paragraph?
Yeah, with that, so.
With the change.
Right, unless, again, that's what Supervisor Bishop requested, so, you know, I'm not the final one, if, if you want to keep that in, I just think it's a little counterproductive to what we're saying.
It doesn't say who interprets the Constitution anyway.
Yeah, so what do you think?
Just put that other paragraph in.
Yeah, so, yeah, just replace that?
No, I would just add it. It's not redundant.
Wait, I'm sorry, I, I'm not following anymore. What, what would you like to do?
This, is this the statement that you're speaking of?
Yes.
Be it resolved that the board will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, detention centers.
Right.
Or offices for the purpose of enforcing laws that unconstitutionally infringe on the ripe people's rights, and then you wanted to strike that.
And where do you think that should be?
I would put it, I thought you were just going to put it under there.
So, but do you want to keep this one? Be it further resolved, board supervisors recognizing Arizona and the United States Constitution is supreme law of land, and no law, statute, code, or executive can conflict with these documents.
It's not, it's not redundant.
That's not really what you're saying, though. Yeah.
No, what she, as interpreted by the Supreme Court is what she wanted in there.
It is different, sorry. Okay, so we're going to put that at the, at the end.
That's where I put it.
Yeah. Is that okay? Do you get that? All right, that, that's my motion.
I will second.
You've heard that motion and seconded any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Item forty-six, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Gould, Supervisors, this is a kind of a housekeeping item that we do yearly. I provided a list of the, the current assigned boards and commissions. We can either make a motion to leave them all the same, or if you guys want to make any changes, you can make the motion that way, completely up to you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
I've never heard a word from the Mojave County Water Authority, so no good me being on that thing, I've never, they've never contacted me, so.
That's one of the reasons I stepped down from it, no communication.
You can put me on for that if you want, if you need somebody to put on.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Johnson is the alternate at this point.
Oh, okay.
Supervisor Linganfelter is the primary person assigned to it at this point, and then Supervisor Johnson is the alternate, so it would be as the alternate if you're taking.
That's fine, that's fine with Supervisor Johnson.
Yeah, if there's no other changes, I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation from the clerk with the changing of Supervisor Gould for Supervisor Johnson as an alternate on the Mojave County Water Authority.
Second.
You've heard that motion and seconded any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Number forty-seven, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Gould, Supervisors, again, another housekeeping item. We do need to do this this early so that we can get signatures changed in a reasonable amount of time. It takes almost thirty days, so this is why we do it at this, this meeting.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Linganfelter.
May I make a motion that Supervisor Angus serve as vice chairman effective January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty, or twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-three? That make sense? January first to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second for discussion, should we do the chair first and then the vice chair? Does it matter?
You've heard that motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order.
Chairman Gould, I make a motion to have Supervisor Linganfelter be the chairman for, to serve January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Is that within the Constitution?
It is today.
I'll second that motion. You've heard that motion and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. I believe that completes our agenda. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, word adjourned.